Our meeting, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I've asked Captain Roethlis and a number of deputies to lead us in the pledge, if you would.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the meeting for May 9th of the City Council on Redevelopment Agency. We'll go to item number two, changes to the order of agenda. Mr. Mappi.
No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Item number three, report from closed session.
I understand from closed session that the item, the discussions that the council's having on that is not completed yet, so you will be reconvening into closed session from the special meeting immediately after this meeting.
That is correct. Thank you. Mr. Rubens. Item number four, council communications and announcements. I will start from my right. Mr. Grisilli.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to try this again. Last meeting, we attempted to do a presentation on the International Rotary at Work Day. I put on my San Carlos Rotary Club for some much-needed fixing to Laurel Street Park. So we have some, this is a before shot of what the park looked like, and we'll go through, and that's our city clerk, of course, she's the president of Rotary Club. That is Mark Skiavenza. We dug a lot of holes and planted a lot of plants. Our former commander, Pete Nannerone. Bob Guttler, who's an incoming president, and that's Parks and Rec Director Doug Long by the Tanbark. His wife Bonnie was instrumental in helping us do this project, because none of us know much about plants. And we had some children help out. All in all, it was about thirteen Rotarians and about six kids. That's Citizen of the Year Jim Fannastock. So I just wanted to give a special thank you to the Rotary Club. Stop by the park. It looks good. And, you know, this is one thing that's indicative of San Carlos, is citizens coming together and not asking for help, and just working together to make the town look a little bit better. So, that was it.
Absolutely terrific, and I have enjoyed seeing the trashcans, and they look wonderful. And also, President Christine Bowen, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, those were my cute kids in the PowerPoint. Just want to point that out.
And we were following all fair labor practices for children during this time. Mr. Royce.
Yes, driving down to City Hall, I was reminded that there's some signage out there talking about our annual hometown days coming up on May 21st, 22nd here in a couple of weeks. There's a parade, of course, Saturday morning, I believe, starts about 9:45 or 10:00. It runs down San Carlos Avenue, all the way down Laurel, back up to Burden Park. A great event all day with some good food. A lot of our service organizations and clubs have fantastic food, lots of games for the kids, water tank, of course, and there's a barbecue again that night, so a lot of activities. And there'll be a lot of nonprofit organizations, a lot of information about San Carlos and clubs like 4H and so forth. So make a weekend out of it. The weather is usually very, very nice, and it's a great way to see everybody in San Carlos, because there are thousands of people that show up. So, again, May 21st and 22nd. It all started in 1979. Our mayor, Pat Benny, came up with the idea, and since then, it's been a very successful community event for our city.
Perfect. Mr. Brokot. Excellent. I have one nifty bit of news, that we did have a visit from our sister city of Metepec, Mexico. Mr. Royce spent most of the day with them, and we had a pretty solid discussion throughout the day about how city services are delivered, and all kinds of good stuff like that. Got to meet a number of really cute kids, also, from that town. But one of the things that they did do, this is not stuck to the board anymore, so I will hold it up like this. We were presented with a piece of artwork made by a local artisan from Metepec, and we'll be displaying this proudly, but if you get a chance to come and take a look at this closely, you'll see that there are a number of really interesting butterflies. It's a really intricate piece, and we were extremely excited to get that. The other thing that I got, which I was extremely excited about, was one of the members of the delegation is a member of the legislature, also known as the Deputado Federal from Mexico, and he presented to the mayor of San Carlos the official coin of the Mexican Congress, essentially. So I was extremely excited to get that and do that on our behalf. So we'll thank him for that. And I also want to say a special thank you to Tom Davids and John Hoffman, who have been shepherding the Sister Cities program for quite some time. So thank you very much, gentlemen. We will move to presentations. We have a presentation of a proclamation supporting National Police Week, May 15 through 21st, Peace Officer Memorial Day, May 15, and San Mateo County Peace Officer Memorial Day, May 4, 2011. I'll ask Chief Roethlis to join me. Chief, there are a number of where-ases here, but what I want to come down to the bottom is therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of San Carlos recognizes the week of May 15, 2011, as National Police Week, the day of May 15, 2011, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and May 4, 2011, as San Mateo County Peace Officer Memorial Day, and calls upon all citizens to pay tribute to those peace officers who have given the ultimate sacrifice while protecting their communities, dated this ninth day of May 2011. Chief, I know you've got a couple of folks here you'd like to recognize.
I do. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, and my members of the City Council. First of all, thank you very much for the proclamation and taking the time out to recognize our law enforcement officers and those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice in protecting the public. Each year you've done this, and each year I have appreciated it, so thank you again. We had, a couple of weeks ago, several of the deputies assigned to the San Carlos Bureau received awards at the sheriff's office, and I thought it would be good if I could bring them here and introduce them to you, and just let you and the community know a little bit about what they were, why they received an award. So I'd first like to call up Deputy Mark Myers. And Mark is obviously a member of the San Carlos Bureau. He's also a member of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office SWAT team. Earlier this year, Mark was off-duty participating in a half a marathon in San Francisco. At the very end of the race, Mark noticed that there was a gentleman lying on the ground, and, as he described, it did not look good. Mark assessed this situation and took rapid action to initiate CPR with this gentleman. Despite having already run half of a marathon, he was calm under pressure, and he was cool and collected, and he did his very best to save this gentleman. Unfortunately, the gentleman succumbed, but Mark gave him the only chance he probably would have had. And again, it's because of his calmness under pressure, his fitness level, actually, that allowed him to go ahead and initiate and stay with CPR for quite a while, that he was given a combination from the sheriff. So, Mark Myers. The next person I'd like to introduce is Deputy Michael Anderson. Mike is also a member of the San Carlos Bureau, and he was also a member of the Sheriff's Office SWAT team. Mike received the Medal of Bravery from the sheriff during this ceremony. Earlier this year, Mike was dispatched to a local hotel with a subject who's bleeding in his hotel room. Mike got to the hotel, and he was told that a gentleman had cut himself, had sliced his throat, and Mike was by himself at the time. He had to take, you know, imagine that situation, having to decide what you're going to do at that particular point. Mike checked the room. That's all the information he had. He checked the room, he saw two individuals in the room. One was bleeding profusely from the neck. Mike was by himself. The one thing you learn in police academy or in policing is that suicidal persons, people are sometimes homicidal. Mike had to make a decision at that point whether he was going to go in and what he was going to do with himself, to locate the knife, to try to save this person's life, to figure out who this other person really is that's also in the room. The gentleman who cut himself was kind of fighting. He didn't want to be saved, and he had no, at that point, no protective gear, and he had to just go ahead and do what he needed to do. So Mike quickly secured the knife, made sure that got away, and he started lifesaving actions. The person who had cut his throat was trying to fight Mike off, because he was determined to succumb from his injuries. Mike kept the fight up and kept pressure on his neck until another deputy got there. And then, after that, Mike went ahead and allowed fire medics to come in and take over. So, really, for his bravery and for putting this person before his own self, Mike deservedly received the Medal of Bravery from the sheriff last week. And last is David Wiedner. David? I picked David last because I thought those were, we could end on a little bit of a happier note. David was on patrol with another deputy in Woodside, received a medical call, which is a routine call, but they said that the person, they could hear the dispatcher, could hear screaming in the background. David and his partner quickly went to the call. When they arrived, they saw a young lady, about 20 years old, actually giving birth in front of a house at that time. As unfortunate as it was, usually, fire medics can get there before us, but in this case, they didn't, and they were inspecting alarms on the other side of town. So David and his partner were the ones who were going to help deliver this baby, and they did a great job. They had us store a blanket, they helped with, you know, making sure that the baby was okay, making sure that the mother was okay. And Fire Department was actually pretty impressed with the work that the deputies did. And so David received a combination from the sheriff at the ceremony a couple of weeks ago, and during that ceremony, there was a little baby crying in the background, and that was the baby that David and his partner helped deliver. So, they did a great job. Thank you again very much.
Chief, it was a pleasure, actually, to be able to attend the event where these fine officers were decorated. And gentlemen, on behalf of the City Council and everybody in San Carlos, thank you for your service. Thank you for everything that you've done. Chief, we've said it before, we're tremendously fortunate to have you leading the San Carlos Bureau, and we appreciate everything you've done, too. Thank you. We'll move to item number six, public comment. Public comment is for items not on the posted agenda. I have one speaker slip for Gail Goos. Others care to have a chat, please come on up. How are you this evening? Good evening, and you were recognized for two minutes.
I know. Gail Goos. I live at 602 Cedar, Cedar in San Carlos. It's a condo building, and I, we've, let's say, had our building decorated by AT&amp;T, Smart meters, et cetera, so that, I mean, I'm using the term decorated sarcastically. The side of our, the whole front of our building is lined with different installations, and the one other side has another five-foot-by-four-foot-by-one-foot box for something. And I was just wondering if, I don't suppose you can get the things moved, but I would appreciate it, I would have appreciated had it had the installers, the company, you know, responsible had contacted us ahead of time, because there were other places that we feel these things could have been installed. And so, it's probably too late for our building, but perhaps they could be required to do this in the future. There's, it could have been moved 15 feet one way or around the corner of our building. It would have been very helpful. It's pretty ugly. If you drive up San Carlos Ave, southwest corner, and look at our building, you'll see what's now there. You know, all those things.
Okay, I'll actually ask staff if they would take a look at this issue and get back to us, and we'll take a look at that, Gail. Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. We move to item seven, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine. Be enacted by one motion, there will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the council, staff, or public requests specific items to be removed for separate action. Gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendars, item A through F.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that the minutes on page four have been amended as proposed, so I would ask that the consent calendar item for that also be amended.
Amended as the city clerk indicated.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Brokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Mott?
But with noticeable intent to litter. The researchers dubbed this group the Dirty Droppers. And it's worth noting that over eighty percent of the littering is done with intent to litter. It's also interesting that the littering rate increased significantly if the nearest trash receptacle was at some distance from the person that needed to dispose of the litter. If it's right next to the person, they only twelve percent litter. But if you get over sixty feet, that increased to thirty percent. And on Laurel Street, the Laurel Street trash receptacle spacing is up to two hundred The researchers looked at, why do people litter? And they concluded that for non-cigarette litter, only fifteen percent of the predictors were contextual, in other words, due to the setting. And eighty-five percent were due to personal qualities, meaning that the person would litter no matter what the setting was. But the presence of litter definitely attracts litter, and the availability of trash cans, as we just saw, affects the littering behavior. And they made the point that prominent and attractive trash cans tend to be, get people's attention, and they'll get rid of their litter more than if it's just a plastic garbage can somewhere. And of course, what we saw with the Rotary Club, the pride that people take in their community, that also seems to, if it's evident, you know, if it's evident that it's a community that where people take pride in the community, that seems to dissuade litter. Now, the gender was not a factor in littering. They noted that men would be more willing to admit that they littered than women. But age was a significant factor. And so the younger person tends to litter more than the older person. And enforcement was found to be counterproductive. And I'll get more on that later. And cigarette litter, in contrast to the other, to the non-cigarette littering, the setting had a much more significant effect. And they found that the availability of ash receptacles actually affected whether people put their, dispose of their cigarette butts on the ground or disposed of them properly. Not just any receptacle would do. I mean, people could have a trash receptacle nearby, and they would, they wouldn't dispose of the cigarette there, I suppose figuring that might catch fire. So sixty-two percent were individuals. Similarly, gender was not a factor, and age, but age was also a factor. It's interesting that the overall littering rate for cigarette butts was sixty-five percent. So that's, that's quite significant, and that we see a lot of cigarette butts downtown. Now, the study was partially funded by Philip Morrison Associates, or Philip Morris, USA. So, I mean, they have an interest in, I suppose, making it somewhat legitimate. So the recommendations in the study were, on the basis that littered environments attract more litter, they suggested consistent and ongoing community cleanup activities. Now, as stated in the staff report, if a business is having solid waste issues, Recology offers a service where they go out and send recycling specialists out to help them recycle more, and also get on top of their overall solid waste disposal problem. And I believe there are some representatives from Recology here tonight, if you have questions. Another opportunity would be to enhance our street sweeping program. We sweep the streets two times a week, Friday night and Monday night, in the early morning hours. Now, it's a challenging, Laurel Street is a challenging street to sweep because we have the bulb outs and where the trees bump out, and so trash cans tend to get kind of locked up in there. And then there can be cars parked there. That's, that's quite common, especially particularly in South Laurel where there are apartments. And, you know, the trash will get hung up by the car. The street sweeper has to veer out around the car, so it really reduces the effectiveness of the street sweeping program. So one idea would be to restrict parking on street sweeping nights, two nights a week in this, in this commercial area. That wouldn't work so well in a purely residential area, but it might work okay in this area. And our, one of our maintenance workers suggested that we, we accompany the street sweeper, or precede the street sweeper with someone who goes out, blows the litter out into the street where it can be swept more easily. He said he used to be assigned to do that, but had, it had to be cut back through the budget cuts. That might be something that could be built into the street sweeping program. As far as receptacles, you know, we've, we've got the, the new receptacles that are, were just, many of them were sponsored by the Rotary Club. And replacing the rest of those existing receptacles, about, there's about twenty-one left, would, would benefit because, as I said, the more prominent and visible the, the receptacle, the more likely it is to attract litter. Now, these are costly. This, this unit costs about twenty-five hundred dollars, shipping included. And, you know, people were, I mean, it's, that's a lot. I don't know, it's kind of bothers me that it costs that much. I called the landscape architect about this, and a single unit is typically twelve hundred dollars. We've got a double unit, so it's twenty-five hundred dollars. Most of the cost seems to be just in the design aspect of this, because you can, you can get a cheapo metal garbage can for much less, but we're looking for a certain look, and you've got to pay more for that. So I wish we could get them for less, but, but that's what seems to be what the price is. And the nice thing about this particular unit is it's compact, you got two together, and you have, you do have space for sponsorship there, which is good. And they found that when you put one of those in, an additional, an additional trash can, the littering rate decreased by one percent from that seventeen percent that we're littering. On the ash receptacles, for each added ash receptacle, it's a more significant effect. The littering rate for cigarette butts decreased from, by nine percent from sixty-five percent. And that's the, that's the kind of the companion matching ash receptacle to our, our selected Now, volunteer involvement would be welcome for these reasons shown, but enforcement was not recommended by the study. The, in my staff report, the police chief helped with this, he, he pointed out that it would divert from the sheriff's other duties, as we heard about tonight, very important duties that they're involved with, and it would negatively affect the perception of the police department. You know, if you're out there having a deputy, deputy enforce litter, why aren't they doing more important things? But the psychologists would also say that these, these types of enforcement activities probably have no long-term results. It's almost seems like, what they're saying is that it, it's a power of suggestion, you know? You punish it, then it seems to encourage it in some ways. So that concludes the presentation, and I look forward to hearing the council's views on this item, and be glad to answer any questions.
Great. Gentlemen, let me invite public comment initially. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment on this issue. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure? Mr. Grocott?
Well, I highlighted the items that I think we should take action on, and so I'll just go through these real quick. The first one, the direct staff to seek volunteer assistance. Number three, advocate for corporate mass media campaigns on litter prevention. And I would specifically look at some of our, I don't know if they were necessarily corporate, except for Starbucks, but look at the companies that we have downtown who their customers contribute to the problem. So I guess that would be Starbucks and maybe a couple others. Number seven, direct staff to do a CIP budget, see if we can put some more trash cans. And I also looked at this attachment that we were given, and I noticed that if you, if you look at where the locations are, there's, there's mostly a rhythm. And I think there's a couple of places where that rhythm falls off. For instance, in the, in the six-hundred block of Laurel Street, as you go down on the, I think this would be the west side, what we would consider the west side, there's a can, you think there might be one, and there's not. And I think what that does for people is they're walking along, they see a can, they keep walking, and they think, well, I'll see another one, I can throw something away, and then it's not there, and so they just throw something on the ground. So I think repetition is, is important. And so I found, like I said, two locations at least where we might want to put cans where we don't have them. Number ten, direct staff to work with businesses with high trash volume, possibly to, to purchase for their store areas. And so we could combine that, combine that with item seven, possibly, if that, if that were workable. And then direct staff to work with Recology, and then, on these businesses. I, and then by the way, I would add Recology to the corporate outreach program if we're going to do something like that. Maybe, you know, I was saying Starbucks earlier, maybe Recology would like to help us out with that as well. And then I had a number fifteen, or, yeah, I had a fourteen and a fifteen. Fourteen was, does pertain to enforcement. I agree with Mr. Wile about the enforcement issue, but one of the other issues we have downtown, it's, it's also littering related, is people walking their dogs, not having a, something to pick up the dog's feces with, and they just leave it there. And currently, we do have, we have a dog leash ordinance, I know because I got stopped one time with my little harmless white Shih Tzu, but anyways.
Oh, they can be mean.
They can be very mean. But I think added to the dog leash ordinance could be that you have a bag with you as well, or some type of mechanism to pick up dog feces. That probably wouldn't get used a whole lot, but there could be occasion where that enforcement could come into play. So, you know, I want to look at that. And then fifteen was, we might, maybe we look at a program where we just simply say, we'll come by and pick up the trash, for instance, like in front of Starbucks. I hate to pick on them, but I know they're a major contributor, them and a couple other retailers downtown. But just say, you know, we'll come by and we'll pick up this trash where it's overflowing and landing in the street and so forth, and we'll, we'll send you a charge for it. Or if you care to, have an employee come out and take care of the, the trash that's in the bin in front of your store, and we won't charge you, but if we see it becoming a problem, you know, it's similar to what happens with people's property tax bills. If you have to do weed abatement or something like that, you send them a notice, they don't, they don't take care of it, you take care of it, and then you add it to their tax, their, their property tax bill. So something along the lines of that. Thank you.
It's Mr. Grocott. Could you, I've got seven, ten, fourteen, fifteen. What were the ones before seven?
Three, one and three.
One and three. Thank you.
And by the way, I would, I would recommend, I think this is what staff has recommended, that we do number one first, look at what the real issues are, and then we take on these others.
Okay. Mr. Royce?
Yes, sir. First of all, I think Mr. Grocott's got a lot of good thoughts there, agree with everything there. Mr. Roy, two questions first, I can address before I make some comments. The first one is, I know a year ago, we, we had seen some solar compactors, which were expensive, but it really crushes stuff down. There was, I saw it in Banff and Boston. Is there any potential or future thinking about bringing those solars into San Carlos in addition?
No, I, we looked at that and had that, somewhat had the discussion when this, this trash receptacle was selected as our standard. We had that in, in the report at that time. I didn't recommend it at that time because, one, for appearance, and two, they're about five thousand dollars each, and these things do get hit. We, they do get run over. And I would just hate to lose a five thousand dollar trash receptacle that way. So.
That's fine. And then my second question is, it talks about drafting an ordinance for citations given to litter. So again, I assume then there, we do not have a formal ordinance citation fee for littering?
So the attorney can cover that.
We're doing.
We, we do have an ordinance that, that we could do criminal citations on, and potentially some nuisance abatement through civil action, but we don't have an administrative fine ordinance where city staff can do an administrative fine, and we would have an, instead of having the citation be to report to the, as an infraction to the municipal court and pay your fine at the county, we would have our own internal appeal system, and, and that would be a civil remedy rather than a criminal. That has been effective in other cities with different types of code enforcement issues. It's not strictly for, for litter. And that was the, if, we've discussed this in the past about whether or not it's time or appropriate to, to look at that type of an ordinance, but that would be one more tool, not, not criminal, but civil administrative citations.
Great, great comment. Okay. So my general comments, thank you, that'll help in some of my comments here. It's an interesting concept, because I drive people around, friends or people that come from some other part of the world, and I'm always very proud to drive through the neighborhoods of San Carlos. You drive down Elm, you go up Crestview, you go wherever you are, and it's pristine. It is so clean. There is no litter. And I'm as proud of our downtown as the front of my house. And you get downtown, and it gets more public, and for some reason, the papers blow around, and the cigarette butts start showing up, and it's more difficult to go over and pick up a can, take a can of Coke and throw it away maybe, but, but we do need to address this. And so just some general comments I made, more on, on the first paragraph of the staff report, it hits some broader issues. You know, the, a whole media campaign and setting, what I would call setting an expectation with our citizens for our downtown, I think would be really, really important. I, I agree very much with our chief. I think enforcement with priorities that our sheriff has to do and the perception is not the way to go. I was really glad to see that Robert had that in the report. It's not effective, we wouldn't want to, to do that. What I read through this is, is attacking it, maybe that's too strong of a word, focusing on it, on where the issues are. And so if you walk downtown, there are certain types of businesses, I'm not going to pick on a coffee shop, but there are types of businesses that kind of create it. And if we've threw in some enforcement, and maybe more formal citations or enforcement between public works, can focus where, where the main issues are, I think that we could get, get a lot done by, by focusing on that way. It says here, businesses with high trash volumes, but also I'm looking at businesses that create that activity where there's more litter, because there are parts that, that don't create it. I put, I know Recology is here, a couple things going on there. We've changed a lot of our recycling and garbage. I don't know what the answer is, but it'd be nice to know now that we've changed, how is the litter after they go through? Is it better, or is it worse, or about the same, as far as going through the neighborhoods if there's anything left? And also, I think we have a duty, maybe it's outside the scope of this, but it is Holly Street, as, because we get all twelve cities that take garbage and recycling across the freeway. Some of that does impact San Carlos, so paying attention to litter, although, again, that might be outside the scope. And then my last thoughts are in, in the cigarette area. It was the percentage, sixty-five percent, that means, so either sixty-five, probably sixty-five percent of smokers throw every cigarette outside, is what that means to me. That's amazing. I thought it was five percent smoke a lot and throw them all outside, but sixty, and even if you put cigarette containers, it only drops nine, nine percent. I think there, we really do need media, we need a marketing campaign. I think we do need some citations. I, I think someone who throws a cigarette out today is going to do the same thing tomorrow, and the same thing on Wednesday, and every day. And it could be twenty or forty cigarettes per day. I think most, I know the percentage might be, I think most people who smoke are pretty, pretty good about it. I think there's that few, that that habit's not going to change until we do many of, of these steps. And, and it is a, a bad habit. So when it talks about cigarette butts are a significant aspect, but when you walk down Laurel Street, go and look at a curb. It's, it's crazy on how much there is there. And let me just close by saying a couple items. Windshield hangers don't occur very much, but if we're looking at an ordinance, that when, when someone's running for election, or someone's advertising their business, and they go through all downtown and put five hundred or a thousand windshield hangers, those end up all on the street. And let's see here, and I think those are my thoughts heading on a broad scale on what we need to do. So again, media, set expectation, and cigarettes, I would like to really change a few people's habit in that category.
I'll go back to you. Mr. Klein?
Everything's pretty much been said, but I'm going to disagree a little bit with Councilman Royce. I think for the cigarette butts problem, as someone who's cleaned up Laurel multiple times in this year alone, due to our Rotary Club president making us work a bit more, a major issue is the cigarettes, and there's about six or seven main contributors of the locations downtown Laurel Street. There's Laurel Street Park, there's in front of the coffee shops, in front of the laundromat, in front of the bars, and in front of restaurants. That's where you find the majority, you find ninety percent of cigarettes in those areas because that's where everyone sits and smokes. And none of those locations is there anywhere for anyone to throw cigarettes. You don't throw them in the trash because you start a fire. And so I, I think, you know, we can come down on the smokers, and you're really not supposed to smoke in these areas anyways because of the twenty-five-foot rule, but that's never stopped anyone regardless. I think one of the things, if we're going to look at a CIP budget, we do have to look into ash receptacles. At the school I went to, every fraternity and sorority had mounds of cigarettes in front of them by the end of the weekend, and the university purchased what was called smokers' chimneys back then. They were these receptacles with a little hole in the top, drop your cigarette in, and it went away. And then the Greek Row reallocated the location of those to Greek Row, and suddenly the problem went away. All the fraternity and sorority members would start throwing them in this because they had pride in their, in their, their homes. So I think the same thing would happen downtown if we just had the availability of these. There's a lot of smokers on Friday and Saturday nights, and they just, we just need to afford them the opportunity to actually dispose of them regularly. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but I think it's going to be far greater than seventeen percent. Most people don't want to litter, they just don't really have much of a choice. So that's the only thing I'd like to see. If we're going to do a CIP budget, I would like to see some sort of attachment to our garbage receptacles, or a separate ash receptacle available in those primary locations, because it's pretty obvious where everyone congregates to smoke. That's it.
Mr. Grisilli?
I agree with most, most of what was been said. I think relative to parking restrictions, as, as Mr. Wile indicated, you might be able to get away with it in the northern part of Laurel, but you're certainly not going to be able to do it on the southern part. I think his point, which I didn't realize, is having, having the person go ahead. I think that's a great idea. I know it's a little bit labor-intensive, unfortunately, but I think it's a great idea to, that way, I mean, I think you can get a lot of it out that way. But as I think my other council members have mentioned, I really believe that, as Mr. Klein said, there are certain businesses that unfortunately have this come into play. And if I could jump back for a second also, it's not only a public outreach, because we could have everybody in San Carlos get a postcard, they're all on it. A lot of people come in on the weekends, a lot of people come in to eat and drink and whatever. We're never going to educate them to that extent, but we can educate the business owners. And it would seem to me that if, as, as Mr. Klein said, you, I mean, it's easy for me to run a person's business, but you close at eleven o'clock or twelve o'clock, and you've got, one of your employees has got a job to do at twelve o'clock. He's got to go out, or it's crack of dawn, if not at twelve o'clock, then the first thing in the morning or whatever, to take care of the area. And that's just part of the program. And I think that's really what we need to enforce a little bit more to, and I hate to throw the, the burden on the businesses, but you're not going to get, and then, as Mr. Klein said, and Mr. Grocott also, more of these receptacles in the, in the appropriate spots. I think those are the two best ways to go. Public outreach to the public to some extent, but there's so many people coming in, I don't think that's going to necessarily cover too much of it. So I'm trying to look at some dollars here, and the CIP budget, I agree, has been mentioned. I don't want the overnight parking one. And I think really the impact is to, is to get the word out to the businesses and maybe have an administrative ordinance for, for the businesses. And it's fairly easy, as Mr. Klein said, to identify where they are, and, and just, and again, try to get people to figure out what's going on. It's, it's a sociological problem in a lot of ways, and that's hard, those are hard to fix. So, anyway, I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Grocott?
I'm sorry, the reason I wanted your attention, I just wasn't sure if I had said number eleven on my list.
No, sir, you did not.
Yeah, and I, I actually had that included. So that's a little different than what Bob was saying, because that's the one about prohibited overnight parking in the downtown. And I would presumably, I would presume that to be the six, seven, and eight hundred blocks.
I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but it's, it's hard, because past that, as you well know, there's, there's people that live in, in apartments. But I, but I still believe the blow thing might work, I mean, I don't know which, again, you can, we can try one or the other, or, I mean, you can always try something and see if it works, and if it doesn't, then we go to Plan B.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Through the chair, I'd want the chief to weigh in on number eleven, not so much about the availability to do it, but how would that, would that encourage drinking and driving? Some of those cars get left downtown because people go downtown, and they drink too much, and they get a cab. So I don't want to, you know, force people to move their car and, and rack up some more numbers, so.
That's a good point. Let's see, just a couple of thoughts here. Actually, I know we have some Recology folk. Could I ask you to come up for just a second? There've been a number of alternatives that have been presented to the city council. I'm curious, this is something you think about a whole lot more than we probably do, so if you have any additional ideas or things that, that you would like to highlight.
Thank you, Mayor Ahmed. Tammy Del Benny, Recycling Manager with Recology. Actually, we, we have looked at litter on our own part, now that we're kind of in the streets, and, and ways to help mitigate litter. We're, we're actually looking at a, a bag campaign to encourage residents, for residential customers to bag their garbage before they put it into their containers, and also to, for the businesses, to bag, to use biodegradable bags when they do their compost program. Because the law of physics is, when, when the arm goes up, if it's a windy day, and we've seen windy days lately, and that's really where we're, we're getting calls now, if you put shredded paper into your recycling container, if you bag it in a paper bag, it won't be a ticket-tape parade when, when the truck empties it. So little things like that will help mitigate some of the litter. So that's one of the things we're looking at doing, is, is a, a bag campaign, educating the residents and businesses about how to properly contain their materials before they put them into their carts and bins. But I think everything that was said here tonight is all good, good information, and, and we, I have, our waste area specialist, Mia Rossi, is here with me tonight. She's been working with the businesses, Mia? She's been working with the businesses, I won't name names either, downtown, and trying to get them to increase their recycling programs, and, and we're happy to work with the city and, and meeting with businesses to encourage more recycling, look at, making sure that they have enough service, whether it's garbage or recycling, so that even containers before their service are not overflowing, because that doesn't help either when it goes time to, to empty them. So we're here to help.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think the, I was just looking at the list, the only two things that I really wanted to pull out was number three and number four. Number three talks about a mass media campaign. I don't know that we really need mass media. I would probably say just a very targeted outreach is probably a, a better way to go. And then with regard to number four, regarding things such as polystyrene, I know that we're going to be discussing that at a, at a meeting later. What I'd like to do is just actually to see if we can get a little bit of consensus on a couple of these items. I'm looking at Mr. Grocott's list, and what I would like to do is just see, for direction for staff to take next steps. Is there consensus around item number one? Looks like there is. Let's just go through this. Item number two?
No, not necessarily.
I think media, yes.
No, no?
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, on two and three. I don't, I don't see mass media being any, but, you know, whatever the council wants to do.
And number three? I, I think if it was changed to outreach, I could support that, but, okay, so just targeted outreach, not a mass media. Item number four, I would just direct that we are going to have a discussion on this later on. Item number five, is there a consensus on that?
No.
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 That's consensus. Item number six?
No.
No.
Number seven?
Yeah. Seven is good.
I think seven and Mr. Klein had specifically talked about cigarette butt receptacles and things of that nature. Number eight?
Yes.
Well, eight for the businesses. I'm not sure for the, for the, I'm not sure how it would work for a person. Again, that ties into the police side of it. So it'd be city, it'd be like a code enforcement officer or whatever, as opposed to a police officer, or a deputy sheriff.
Mr. Malby or Mr. Rubens?
Typical administrative citation program, the city manager would delegate to different members of the city staff to be able to, to issue those citations.
So I have one question on that, so, and maybe the chief could have, so is there a... So I have one question on that, so, and maybe the chief could have, so is there an ordinance or a citation you currently have if someone is throwing cigarettes out on the curb all evening? Is there a process to cite right now? So can this process help? If a police need to cite, would they be able to also?
Yeah, just to be clear, the way the administrative citation works is, I mean, any member of staff, including the deputies who are assigned that function, can issue the administrative citation.
Yeah, I think that gives us much more flexibility. Not that we would want to do it that often, but we would have the capability. Thank you.
I would, I'm a little hesitant on writing up a new ordinance or trying to do some more enforcement, especially if we've got a capital program going on and outreach. I'd kind of like to give those measures a little bit of time to see how well they work before I start smacking ordinances in, but that's...
I agree.
I agree with that, because again, I go back to the business side of educating the businesses. And, you know, and like you said, that's the next step. If they're not, if the businesses aren't stepping up, that's where I think the administrative citations would go. Like I said, otherwise, not to the individuals, because it's just, it'd be impossible, in my opinion. You're not going to, you're not going to have Mr. Moore down there on Friday night till twelve-thirty going counting cigarettes, so. Might want to be, I don't know.
He's got his iPad, he's ready to go. So it looks like we could hold that in our back pocket. Item number nine?
No.
Yeah, I think there's consensus on no. Item ten?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
All right, so high-volume stores, we would like to have some additional directions.
Again, it's part of the educational thing, I think.
Exactly. Item number eleven, we started talking about the overnight parking.
No.
I think we've got more no.
I would think that would be another one to hold in your pocket.
Okay.
But I would like to see the blow guy go.
Item number twelve?
The last time you can laugh, I must say.
This is the Business Improvement District. No. Thirteen, direct staff to work with Recology, I think we are. Then Mr. Grokot had added, item number fourteen, I guess I'll call it sort of a pooper-scooper ordinance.
Just that you'd either have to have a bag, or they sell these little containers that hold bags, you can pull them out, or something you'd have to have with you to...
We have them at the parks, you know, those containers.
Well...
But the difficulty would be, where do you put them, unfortunately, where do you put it on the street?
Attach them to the...
No, 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 the ordinance would simply, we would do an add-on to the leash ordinance. There's already a leash ordinance, you have to have your dog on a leash if you're walking in town.
Okay.
In addition to your leash, you would have to have a bag or something to pick up feces with on your person, either attached to, like I say, they make these nifty little things that hold the bags, and you just, people clip them to their dog leash.
Sounds reasonable. If you've got a dog, you better be ready to pick it up.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm not seeing a whole lot of coordination.
Enforcement's the problem. I mean, I, in theory, I agree with a thousand percent, I really do, but how do you enforce it?
Well, same way you enforce the dog leash program.
I guess, I don't know how lucky, how lucky you were to be tagged, I mean...
And I wasn't excited, I was just as an officer...
I say that tongue-in-cheek, I mean, what are the odds? I mean, you know, somebody was driving by and got that one, I mean, but I think that's, the difficulty is the enforcement part of it, that's the difficulty.
Yeah, I mean, the difficulty with a bag, a lot of people don't have bags, they get over, they use a paper tissue. If your dog, if your dog is small enough, you're lucky, and it works. I mean, the main thing is that they clean up after their dog, not that they have a bag. So it's more enforcement, and I'd hate to require everybody to have a bag that has a dog.
Excuse me, I didn't say to have a bag. I said that the ordinance would simply add to the dog leash ordinance stating that you have to have something on your person to retrieve any dog feces if that, if they have any. You could have a bunch of napkins, you could have a bag, it doesn't have to state bag.
I think it's just, I think the enforcement thing, because you're going to have it in your pocket, you're going to have it, do you have it on you? I mean, it's, I just don't, I know where you're going, I agree with you, but I don't know how you...
Well, it looks like it's, this is something we're probably keeping in our back pockets, so to speak.
Civil libertarian part of it.
I was, I'm kind of looking, I raised Great Danes, so that's not going to work. And lastly, actually, there were two other items. Number fifteen, Mr. Grokot, I wrote it down as sort of an abatement charge, that if there was too much recycling or too much garbage that we would...
Yeah, if you have, if you have a receptacle in front of your business, and it's overflowing, especially with things that are obviously from your business, we'll come by and clean it up, but we'll charge you. Or you can have one of your, similar to what Mr. Grisilli was saying, if you have one of your employees that comes out there and monitors the trash can and keeps it from overflowing, you know, then, then fine, there's no charge. But if we have to come by, we'll do it, and we'll send you a bill. And it'll, you know, that would probably encourage most businesses to then have an employee do it.
Yeah, personally, I kind of like that, again, with the general notion of ordinances, I'd like to see how outreach and marketing works.
And that's another in the back pocket.
So that's a hold-on?
Yeah, I think so. And then Mr. Royce had brought up the idea of, I'll call it, car flyers and marketing materials being put on windshields in parking lots. We got all this marketing stuff. Do we have any ordinances or any way to deal with that today?
Well, I hate to punt on that one, but I'm going to look at that because it raises some issues other than just simply litter flying off the flyers, because they could be considered signs, or it depends on a lot of different factors I'm thinking about. So why don't I report back to you on how I can, how we can safely regulate those types of...
Through the chair. I have a question on that. I could see where you're going, Mr. Rubens, on, you know, First Amendment rights. However, you could have an ordinance that says if you put it out there and then we have to pick it up, we'll charge you for it. So you can see, you can put it out there all you want, but if it flies off the windshield and ends up in the street, in the curbs, and it takes our city staff to go around and pick it up, clean it up, we'll send you a bill. Just, it's similar, it's similar to what we do with yard signs for campaigns.
Yeah, it's, I understand what you're saying, it sounds like it's akin maybe to bottle deposits, you know, if you, if you, you know, if something gets thrown away, you're going to get charged for it one way or another, and obviously, we would know who put the flyer on, because they're usually, these organizations have their name and phone number on them. But let me look and take a look at the legal issues and how other communities have addressed those issues, and I'll report back to you.
Through the chair.
Sir.
Mr. Rubens reminded me of something that we might want to add to this list, which is simply, to, sort of another task for them to do, is to check with towns where, we do know that they have really clean downtowns because they rely on it for their reputation. I'm thinking of certain, you know, touristy towns, and I can't think of the name of it, but there's one down in the Monterey area, in Monterey itself, Carmel, exactly. And just check with them and see, you know, they obviously keep their downtowns very nice, and what are some of the things that they do that we might consider?
Well, we have Dirty Harry as a mayor, so I don't think I, I don't think I would litter in that town.
Dirty Harry.
Oh, yeah. Maybe that's the solution.
Start carrying a forty-four.
Through the chair, Councilman Grisilli brought up having a blower go before our street sweeping. Can we get that costed, so we know what that is?
Definitely.
Let's, I think there was general, general position...
I thought Mr. Grisilli was volunteering for that job.
I don't have a leash for it.
We can fix that, that's no problem.
I knew you guys would help me out.
Sure, we got one in the courtyard.
It's about the size of a golf bag.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll give you a four handicap on that one. All right, any further direction to staff? Seeing now, we'll move to item eleven, new business. Item A, sorry, sorry, ten, unfinished business. Item A, approve amendments to the city's strategic plan and six-month objective matrix. Ms. Mendenhall, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, interim administrative services director. Tonight, we're going to review where we're at with the city's strategic plan and objectives. On February eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, the city council met with the city manager and department directors for a day-long facilitated discussion of the city's strategic issues and goals. The city council formally adopted the strategic plan at the March fourteenth meeting, and this report serves as the May two thousand and eleven monthly report. There are four requested revisions to the plan this month. The date the administrative services director present to council the city's unfunded liabilities and recommend to council strategies to address long-term obligations to past and present employees. We'd like to move the date from June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, to August fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. The date the assistant city manager present to council for consideration a policy on electronic communications and devices, from May fifteenth to June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. The date the mayor present to council for consideration a declaration for San Carlos to accept charter for compassion, thus designating itself a compassionate city, from April thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, to August fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. The date that the assistant city manager present to council the pros and cons of a plastic bag ban program and ordinance, and obtained direction from council from May ninth, two thousand and eleven, to June fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. We'd also like to add an option for council to consider the inclusion of a styrofoam ban program ordinance at that time. And just to quickly reflect, we've actually completed nine objectives to date. The first one is to create and present to city council for action of process to protect our RDA funding. The second is to respond to a request for interest to administer half-moon bay parks and recreation services through a contract. Third, complete salary and benefit reduction proposals for all labor groups. The fourth was ensure presentations to the city council for prospective providers of fire and emergency services, including a city option. The fifth was provide direction to staff on the preferred model for fire and emergency The sixth was to participate in and give a progress report to the city council members on discussions regarding the regionalization of police, fire, hazmat, and EMS emergency services. Seventh, we submit a revitalization project proposal for all of El Camino Real, the CCAG, for consideration as part of the regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategy. Propose to the city council for their consideration a contract to purchase and implementation plan for the city's new permitting software system. And finally, present to city council for consideration the production of a city coin for official recognition from the city. So here's a quick update summary, we've had nine items that are completed, four requested revisions to dates, one requested addition to add the styrofoam ban, and all other tasks remain on target. I'm happy to answer any questions or document any changes you might make.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Through the chair, the only thing I would like to see, if at all feasible, if we are going to postpone an item, I prefer for us to discuss that prior to the date it's supposed to be presented. I know sometimes things come up, and they're their last minute, but if we know two weeks in advance, we should be told the meeting before, prior to the packet where that presentation's supposed to be made.
Okay.
Fair enough. Any other further questions, and take a motion?
I move to approve item ten A. I'll second that.
If there's no objection, that'll be the order. Moving to item number eleven, new business. Item A, consideration of adopting salary and benefit resolution for a city of San Carlos Fire Department. Ms. Mendenhall.
So tonight, we're going to be discussing the salary, the proposed Fire Department salary and benefit resolution. Just a little background, on April eighteenth, at the special council meeting, staff presented council with a budget for a standalone and a hybrid fire department. On April twenty-fifth, the council directed staff to begin negotiations with Redwood City to develop the new hybrid fire department. As part of the hybrid department, Redwood City would supply this management and oversight of our department, including the positions of fire chief, deputy fire chief, battalion chiefs, and administrative support. San Carlos will need to recruit and hire for the following positions, six fire captains, one fire inspector, and fifteen firefighters and/or firefighter paramedics. The budget for the hybrid department without the one-time startup cost is estimated to be approximately five million dollars. Of this, three point one five million, or sixty percent, is directly related to the salaries and benefits of the new department. Sixty-three percent, I'm sorry. Other operating expenses include but are not limited to professional services, utilities, supplies, uniforms, and safety gear. The majority of the estimated one and a half million dollars in savings will come from establishing the salaries and benefits for the new staff. Over the last year, city employees and the city council have agreed to cuts in employee salary, benefits, and retirement benefits to assist with the budget balancing effort. In developing the salary and benefits resolution before you tonight, these same principles have been applied. In addition, staff were closely with our consultants at Tri-Data and the staff in Redwood City. The result is the development of a compensation package that provides pay and compensation comparable to existing San Carlos employees while reducing the cost of providing these services to the public. Since the city hasn't had a department for over thirty years, there are no employees to bargain with. This likely will be the only salary and benefits decision the council will make that is not negotiated through a union. The proposed base salaries for firefighters and captains represent a five percent pay reduction from what the Belmont-San Carlos firefighters currently receive. The pay for the firefighter paramedic is an approximate eight percent pay reduction, and this is due to the reduction in the specialty rate. Belmont currently pays twelve and a half percent specialty pay for paramedics, and we've proposed eight point eight percent, which is comparable with other cities our And this is a chart that just shows comparisons to some other cities as well as Cal Fire. One of the biggest changes we're proposing is a change to the overtime calculation. Overtime calculations will be done in accordance with the FLSA's seven K exemption for work periods. The FLSA allows employers to elect a work period between seven and twenty-eight days. The city has elected a twenty-eight day work period, which means employees must exceed two hundred and twelve working hours in the twenty-eight day period before the employee becomes eligible for overtime. Paid leave time will not count toward hours worked, which is similar to the city's other labor groups. In the past, paid leave has been counted toward hours worked, which raised overtime costs. Over the past year, city council negotiated with the miscellaneous units to calculate overtime to include only time worked. So this is in accordance with our existing labor agreements. FLSA also allows for an eight-hour sleep exemption for those who work twenty-four-hour shifts. In order for this exemption to apply, the employee must have five hours of sleep during the twenty-four-hour period. Otherwise, the time may be counted as working time toward the calculation of overtime. If the employee received at least five hours of sleep during that twenty-four-hour period, the employer may exclude eight hours of the twenty-four-hour shift from the number of hours counted toward the two hundred and twelve-hour threshold. If the sleep is interrupted by a call to duty, the interruption must be counted as hours worked. If the sleep period is interrupted to such an extent that an employee cannot get at least five hours of sleep during their shift, then the entire eight hours is counted as work time. Currently, the Contra Costa Police, the twenty-four-hour shifts utilize this practice. Retirement benefits have also been set at the level of other city labor agreements. Over the last year, the miscellaneous employees all agreed to reduce the retirement benefit and establish a third Cal-Pers retirement tier. This proposal creates a third Cal-Pers safety tier at two percent at age fifty, which is the highest three-year average, or with the highest three-year average when calculating retirement. Also, similar to the city's miscellaneous employees, longevity pay or other post-employment benefits have been eliminated, and instead, the city will establish a VIVA program that the fire employees can contribute pre-tax dollars directly into. Vacation and sick leave have been set at reduced hours from other city labor units based on comments that council members have made during recent contract negotiations and the nature of the scheduling, since there aren't twenty-four-hour shifts. Vacation has been capped at two years maximum. Accrual and paid sick leave cannot be cashed out, and sick leave is not payable upon termination. All other medical, dental, vision, insurance, bereavement, pregnancy, and family care leave have been set at levels similar to existing city employees. The next few slides will represent the comparisons between the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department and the proposed salary and benefit resolution. I have copies of additional comparisons that I'm going to give to Christine Bowden, the city clerk, to distribute. As mentioned before, the city is in a unique position and can build a fire department and set the salaries and benefits before hiring any personnel. This resolution should be viewed as a baseline or starting point for any future labor negotiations. As you can see, the retirement, as compared to the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, we've established the two at 50% third tier. And currently, the fire inspector would be at two and a half at 55. Beginning in 2012, we will have established a new third tier for the miscellaneous employees. Retiree medical, the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department still has a retiree medical program. We now have a VIBA where the employees can contribute directly into a, contribute pre-tax As stated before, these two changes are consistent with our other labor groups. Special assignment for paramedics, that's already included in the base pay, so it's reflected here as none, it's 8.8%. As I stated before, Belmont is 12.5%. Consistent with the council direction for other labor groups, all other specialty pays have been eliminated. You'll notice that Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department has a couple other specialty pays that they use. The frequency of pay is currently set at 28 days or on the same schedule as CalFire. We're working with our current outsourcing, payroll outsourcing provider on system options to determine if it's possible to change this to biweekly. However, if we do change, there will be additional costs involved that haven't been calculated yet. The sleep exemption, as noted before, is currently utilized in Contra Costa County with their 24-hour police shifts. The vacation accrual, we have reduced the vacation accrual from our current employees, and that's been done based on comments from the council, as well as the nature of the scheduling. Again, vacation has been capped at two years, the maximum accrual. Sick leave has also been set at reduced hours for firefighters for similar reasons as the vacation. Sick leave may not be cashed out and is not payable upon termination. As far as holiday pay, firefighters will still be paid, they'll just be paid straight pay when they work a holiday. In summary, again, this is, the council's in a unique situation where you can, you have the opportunity to approve a salary and benefits resolution before we hire any personnel. So again, I encourage you to look at this as a starting point for future labor negotiations. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
Mayor from TriData is here as well.
Excellent. We're going to take public comment at this time, and then we'll get to the Q and A. And one card, Mr. Hawkins?
Hi, y'all. I'm Ed Hawkins. My office is in San Mateo. I'm here offering some comments to you. Some of you have asked for our expertise and some of our comments, based on my 30 years of labor relations and my degree in public administration. I've done a few of these things, so I do have some expertise. I'm just offering some overhead comments. Some of you have been receptive, some of you have not wanted to talk to us about it. First, you talked about your salary, you wanted to have the salary be 5% lower than the existing firefighters who work for the joint department now. You've achieved that with the captains. This program achieves a 10% reduction for firefighters. I'm not sure if that was your intention. The vacation factors, the vacation plan, the way it's set up violates Government Code Sections 53250, 53251, and 53252. I'm not sure if that was your intention. I noticed that your fire inspectors get more benefits than your line-level personnel. I'm not sure if that was your intentions. I noticed that these sections in the firefighters, the way the Leave Act sections violates the Family Medical Leave Act. I'm not sure if that was your intentions. Section 15, the last section about outside employment violates Section 98.6 of the Labor Code. I'm not sure if that was your intention. Job descriptions are a bit problematic. I don't have enough detail to give you some comments on that. I also noticed that there's no holidays provided for in the contract, and if your employees in San Carlos all work on the holidays, they're all here working on Christmas and New Year's and all that, and that's your policy, there's nothing wrong with not having holidays in the contract. If the employees here do take Christmas off and get paid for it, then maybe you should think about that as well. Those are some generic comments. We're always available for you all. If you want any input or any other expertise, we can help you. We certainly can help you try to avoid some of these landmines that are built into your program here.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Gentlemen, yield the balance of his time. The council, any general questions at this moment?
I have a couple.
Mr. Griselli?
Ms. Mendenhall? Is there a reason that we didn't use Foster City and one of your comparable cities? They're literally the same size as we are. At least, I thought they were.
When we began this process, we had looked at Millbrae and Pacifica. I believe it was because of the North Bay regional, or not the regionalization, but the...
Okay, so because we did it that way, we didn't look at a standalone fire department in Foster City that's the same size physically? I mean, they have 29,000 people, and we have 29,000 people? We didn't look at them because we went to the model? Is that what you're saying?
We were looking at the model.
The North Bay model?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate, by the way, that I got this today, 10, 5 minutes ago, but I haven't had a chance to look at it, because what I basically wanted to know is, what are we doing now, which shows this? And what are we proposing? Because what we got, to me, didn't have any bearing in my mind. We can, I mean, it has a bearing to the fact, if you want to start from scratch, but I think we should look at to see what we were doing. I don't have a problem with cutting people's pay, like we said, and we allowed for that, but I was trying to identify with the city manager what the dollars and cents were of benefits. And I don't think I even have it here, what the dollars and cents is in benefits, what they are making now and what they would be making under our proposal.
The savings is approximately $1 million.
Percentage-wise, I'm sorry. In other words, what would the individual person be losing in benefits? Would it be 10% less, 20% less, 30% less?
Benefits would probably be between 10 and 20.
Between 10 and 20%?
I have to go back and run this one.
I apologize. I asked the city manager that same question, trying to identify with apples and apples, so.
That includes overtime.
Okay.
I'm including overtime in that.
Okay, thank you. Those are the questions I have.
Mr. Grocott?
Question I have is, I understand that we're starting from scratch, so this allows us to, you know, be first out of the blocks, so to speak. However, I'm really wondering, and I guess this is as much for my council members up here as it is for staff, why we're going about it this way. It seems to me, in terms of process, it would have made sense to first decide the policy that we may want to have regarding hiring existing employees back into this new department, and from there, deciding how we wanted to do this, because it appears to me like we're going to be setting up, at least the start of negotiations that we're going to have eventually, with a labor group. And especially if we're going to be hiring back existing employees, or if we're going to even want to encourage that, to hire back existing employees. And I think that's a discussion that we need to have, seems to me, first, before we get going on this. You know, again, I understand the idea of we're starting fresh. We could argue that with any position where we hired, where we don't deal with a union. For instance, we just hired a city manager. That's starting fresh. We could have come out of the blocks and said, this is what we're going to do, and, you know, anybody who comes and wants to work for us as a city manager, you know, this is going to be your salary, these are going to be your benefits, you know, all the way down the line, and been public about it the way we've been public with this first. And I just don't understand that policy. And I'll just make one more comment, and it's for the benefit of both staff and my council members. A while back, I had talked to the city manager about a new procedure that, actually, I talked about it with Mr. Weiss when he was city manager, and I talked to Mr. Malpe about it because it recently came up with Menlo Park, whereby they do negotiate, they present to the public what the negotiating points are, starting points. Then you go into closed session and work those things out. You know, labor can present theirs, we present ours. You go into closed session, you work it out, then you come out with a proposal, and you give that even some time with the public for them to digest it, and then you finalize. That, to me, seems fair, so I guess in part, I'm saying, what we're doing here, in some regards, I don't mind it, but I don't want to treat fire department employees or future fire department employees different than we treated everybody else.
I'll let Mr. Malpe.
Yeah, if I may, address a couple of those points. You're correct, Councilmember Grocott, in that there may be an outcome from the current negotiations between the Joint Powers Authority and their 2400 Union, which represents the firefighters of the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Protection, or the Fire Department, rather. There may be some agreements that come out of that that affect employment of those firefighters, should jobs be offered to them with the city of San Carlos that might supersede this salary and benefit resolution. But to the extent that we've got to go out and hire new employees, or that the council doesn't want to offer employment to existing firefighters at the JPA, we would need a starting place to begin to recruit employees to come provide those fire services here. So that would, this would be, one way to think of this is, this would be new hires. You could choose, as a council, to treat existing employees of the JPA not as new hires, if the council chose to. But either way, you're going to need to have something in place to go out and recruit and retain any new employees that you might need to reach the full complement. So you've got to have a starting point. And because we don't have a union, we can't, there's nobody to negotiate right now, which is why we need to do this in public. For the purposes of future firefighter employees, there's no union that currently represents them in San Carlos, and there can't be a union representing them until they're hired. So in, as I talked with Councilmember Griselli earlier, there's a little bit of a chicken and egg situation going on here, and that's why we have a need to create the salary and benefit resolution now.
Follow-up question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Grocott?
However, I understand what you're saying. Couldn't another approach of this council be to simply give direction to staff and say, this is the dollar amount we want to, we need to save from how we're doing business You know, and understanding that potentially, we are going to have some existing employees come back, and eventually, whether they're new hires or not, they're going to be represented in this county by local 2400. So we could have, could we not give direction to staff to say, save X amount of dollars or a certain percentage, now go and talk to the representatives of local 2400 and come out, come up with the details of how that dollar amount is saved, so that we know that we've got some buy-in from labor on what the details are? Similar to what we did with, I mean, that's the way we negotiated all these contracts that Ms. Mendenhall spoke of. We just said, come back with this percentage of savings, and you did, and the details were worked out in negotiations.
In the future, that would certainly be a way to handle your labor negotiations. However, right now, there's no union to talk to. We could go talk to a local 2400, but what if the employees that you hire eventually choose a different local to represent them? 2400 doesn't represent all the firefighters in the county currently.
I was under the wrong impression then.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no union right now that represents firefighters as employees of the city of San Carlos. And so there's no, there's no negotiation process. You can't meet in closed session because there's nobody to negotiate with. So we're doing this publicly and in the open because the Brown Act doesn't offer, afford us the opportunity to have these discussions in closed session because there's nobody, there's no labor relations process going on.
Mr. Rice?
Let me first talk a little bit about approach, and I see no problem in getting started with this. I mean, we're not going to wait till October. We need to get moving on this. So there's nothing wrong, in fact, I would very encourage it, that what we're doing right now is, we're putting the stake in the ground. We're hitting it the first couple times, and over the next two or three months, there'll be two or three other players that are swinging at this big steel peg that goes in the ground that becomes what will be a quality fire department, quality service at a competitive price. Has nothing to do what we save. We save, if you save a million, if you could save two, let's save two. If it's only going to save a half million, whatever it is, the object here is quality service at a competitive price, and that's how we've done in the last 15 months on many of our services and been successful. At the end of this, I'll have a question or a request, is where I'm leading to, is that what's difficult is you start at market value. That sounds awkward, but there is a value for a particular service, but it's moving. We've had elections and assessments, we've talked about three in the last five years, in which our taxpayer has said, they're not going to fund as much for fire. They said, no, no, no. We have a tremendous supply and demand issue where Millbrae has an opening and a couple hundred people apply. Big cities are laying off firefighters. But that, that creates a market value that's not really fair. There's just a lot going on in cost and government and cutting it, and it's not the value of a firefighter for the city of San Carlos. And so, actually, Mr. Grocott did bring up a point, it is like, so, we do have these firefighters, we've had excellent service, we basically, how much of a level do we want to attract? You know, the existing people that have this service, that have local knowledge? And I don't know what the answer to that is, but that's another market value in what we want to do. And so, to getting back to these moving targets, when we look at Pacifica, when we look at Millbrae, one of the data points I'm going to want to look at is, that's where they are now, but where are they going? And how drastic are they moving? Or maybe they're not moving at all. You hear different things. And so, a spot rate right now, I need to look and have more data on the direction and the acceleration of that direction. And still, you know, I get back to the point, a fair wage, we need to be fair to people, we need to be competitive pricing, we need to put all these things into it, and that's what's so complicated about it. My main point is, yeah, we need to start and doing it, and so Rebecca, if you could take an action item, as we hit that stake a few more times and bend it left or right, I would like to have more data on the moving targets out there and what other cities are doing. I hear a lot, but what I hear is not fact. I'd like to get factual information on where those directions are going. That's my action, or my request.
Mr. Klein?
I have some other comments I could talk about, but that's my question.
Mr. Klein?
I don't have any questions. Ms. Mendenhall or council, Mr. Rubens, maybe Ms. Casman, I'll direct this to you. A number of allegations were made about the certain aspects and legality of the employment that was put forward. Do you have any comments regarding that?
Yeah, certainly Joan Casman and her legal firm have reviewed the salary and benefit resolution. In fact, a great many times, we had them review it, as it's been written and developed the last several months, and they found it to be in accordance with California and federal employment law, so.
Okay, and I just also want to verify this, that Chief Skinner in Redwood City has also looked at this.
That's correct, but certainly, we made notations of Mr. Hawkins' comments tonight, and we will continue to verify this, and if we find a change needs to be made, we'll bring it back to the council to make such a change. As I've said before, this is really, should be thought of as a start... As I've said before, this is really, should be thought of as a starting point to begin the recruitment process for hiring firefighters to take over your fire department in a mere four or five months. I expect, once that's done, you'll probably be back at the table with a fire union here in San Carlos negotiating a memorandum of understanding before this calendar year is over. So this will just be the first of many conversations the council will have on these labor issues with fire.
And just to validate what we have in front of us, so I can get the correct context, this process, this salary and benefits resolution is really for, if you're coming new into this department, this is what you can expect. It is possible, at the council's pleasure, that existing employees from the Belmont-San Carlos Fire JPA, if they came over, that there may be a different deal, but that's at the council's pleasure at this point. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. So what we're looking at here is not necessarily a deal that would be extended to existing JPA employees. Mr. Malpe, you and I have spent a good deal of time talking about the budget and what we've done here, and I think it's been fairly consistent on my side that I've said from budget standpoints, that I like to cut once, I like to cut hard, I like to cut deep, and from there, we grow. Because I don't want to come back to anybody and say, "Well, I'm going to cut you now, and next year we're still trouble." Okay, we're going to cut you again. Sorry, we kicked it down the road. We're going to cut yet again. I'm looking at you for your budget expertise, and Ms. Mendenhall, same thing. It's a 5% reduction in salary from what current JPA has, but it is market rate. You're showing me that we're within the market.
Yes.
The benefits are different. I need to be able to legitimately say to the people who are coming into this department and to the folks in San Carlos that we're not going to cut this again next year. What is your response on that?
I agree. I think your assessment that this would, this is our attempt to come up with something that would be sustainable long-term. And as I said earlier, a starting point for, you know, many years of labor relations as a fire unions formed after you hire employees, and I'm making the assumption that a union would form, but I think that's a fairly safe assumption. And so, we were basing these numbers on what we felt was, what we could find examples for in the county, in the Bay Area. To answer your question from earlier, Councilmember Grokot, and to expand a little bit on what Ms. Mendenhall said, she's kind of coming into this process a little later than the game, than some of us who've been involved a bit longer. One of the reasons that we focused on Millbrae and Pacifica is they are towards the bottom of the curve, if not at the bottom of the cost curve in fire in the county, and they're close to us. So you're right, there are other departments like Foster City who pay more, however, the current JPA pays more than Foster City still. So we felt by providing you with the JPA number, and then Millbrae and Pacifica, you had a range to look at from about the top in the county. I think there's Redwood City and San Mateo may be a little bit higher than the JPA, but from about the top of the curve in the county to the bottom of the curve for fire in the county. And to see that we were trying with salaries in particular to fall in the middle there, but to give you that range for perspective, as opposed to just providing you with every agency in the county.
And if I may through the chair.
Please.
Also, the benefits that are before you are definitely different than other agencies. We've taken some of the direction from council and have tried to incorporate that into our structure, so we have now a third tier for safety. We have a VIBA program instead of retiree health. That's a significant savings on top of the overtime calculations. By using the FLSA overtime calculations and the sleep exemption, we're estimating we can save $500,000.
Last question. Mr. Malpe, Ms. Mendenhall, I get stopped and folks tell me about their retirements, and they look at the public sector with pensions. In this proposal, you were talking about two at 50. So I'd like you to explain what that means, first of all. Second, can you explain relatively from the cost perspective, 401Ks and Social Security versus the CalPERS? Can you help me compare this? Is there any way to go apples-to-apples on that?
I can take. So the 2% at 50 is 2% for every year of service at retirement age of 50. And instead, in the past, tiers have had what is called a premium, where they've taken the highest-year salary and applied that toward the retirement costs. What we're recommending is 2% at 50 with a three-year highest average. So that will bring that down and hopefully eliminate the pension spiking that you've read about in the papers. As far as a 401K, in government, it's actually a 401A. We have looked at our current provider, and we could offer that, depending on if you wanted to do an employer match or not. You could do a mandatory employee contribution, similar to what we have with PERS. The employees have a mandatory 9% employee contribution that they have to pay in. We could do that, and we could offer an employee match. That would be up to the pleasure of the council.
Understood. I guess I wanted to go just a little bit deeper. Mr. Malpe may understand what I'm, because we had a brief conversation about this.
We did. We spoke a little bit earlier, and I think currently, right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, but I believe that 2% at 50, the employer contribution is estimated to be about 14%.
Yeah, the normal cost.
Right now, the normal cost. We talked about Social Security, and actually, an interesting point came up in our conversation. We've been assuming that any future firefighters would not be in Social Security because there was a public safety vote of employees here years ago, and so, public safety employees in San Carlos or police officers weren't in Social Security, whereas the miscellaneous employees had voted to stay in Social Security. So as a result, for miscellaneous employees, they contribute 7% of their salary to Social Security, as well as the city making contribution to Social Security for miscellaneous employees, where that wouldn't necessarily be the case, or would it? And we'll have to talk with our attorneys to find out what the answer to that question is. But the point being that I think it's fairly typical in the private sector, and, you know, you're all private sector folks, so you can correct me if my impression's wrong, that a 10% contribution into an employee's 401K made by an employer is fairly typical, and of course, most private sector employers are going to be in Social Security. So in the end, employees are often making contributions in the range of 17% to either a combination of Social Security and a 401K plan on behalf of employees. When you compare that to 14% contribution to PERS at 2% at 50, without them being in Social Security, which was our assumption, you're actually making a smaller contribution to their retirement plan than most private sector companies would to a 401K. And we simply discuss that as a way to look at, going forward, how public sector pensions might be structured and discussed with the constituency.
Great. I know it's occasionally for, you know, a lot of folks who are out in the private sector and who are doing a lot of the working and living in San Carlos, they have a 401K, they have Social Security, that's their retirement plan. Pensions look different, and one thing that is interesting is that for many folks who do receive CalPERS pensions, they do not get Social Security. So it's an interesting point to bring up and recognize. Any further questions, gentlemen? Mr. Grokot.
Yeah, I have one. In trying to understand the vacation and sick leave accrual, two questions. You mentioned that it's reduced levels compared to other city employees, and just to try and understand it, because it's based on a 28-day pay period. Does that mean, I'm trying to, excuse me, I'm trying to turn to that page, 28-day work period. So if you get 48 hours, that means you get two shifts. Is that correct? Maximum of two shifts?
I want to say it's about 3.1... And I'll look to Janet Bo, our Human Resources Manager, she had, she worked with the numbers a little bit more than me. I want to say it's like an accrual of 3.6-something per pay period, or... Does that sound right?
Did you find the number, Mr. Griselli?
No, I don't, I'm not sure. I, I'm sorry, Mr. Grokot, are you talking about sick leave?
Well, I'm looking at page eight of, or excuse me, five of six.
Five of six.
Vacation accrual limit cash out.
Got it.
Very top, 28-day work period from 48 hours to 100, based on years of service. So if you're just starting out, you're a new employee, your vacation accrual is 48 hours.
One week, barely one week.
In a year. It's not even one week. That's, the way a firefighter works, they work 24-hour shifts, so it seems to me you're just accruing the vacation of two shifts, which to a firefighter, that's the equivalent of two days off.
You're correct. If you want an apple-to-apple comparison with a city employee, you should double the numbers, is the short answer.
How so?
But that's, those numbers would be comparable based on a 24-hour shift. Like you're saying, two shifts, but two shifts for a firefighter is almost a full week of work. It's, while it's only two days, they don't work five days a week, like a miscellaneous employee. They work, yeah.
No, but still, if I want to take a vacation as a first-year employee of the fire department, I can take two days off?
Two shifts.
Two shifts.
No, I'm confused now, because according to what you have, you have 48 hours for the first year, a worker a year. Is it 56-hour work week?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. Okay, where am I wrong? Did you say we're on 56-hour work weeks?
Pardon me?
Aren't we going to be on 56-hour work weeks?
The work week schedule has not been defined.
Not been defined. Well, let's assume that it's 56, just for humor me, because it's 56 hours now, right? Right? Okay, so let's assume we pick that up. You get 48 hours, you basically get a week off in the first year.
Correct.
Even.
Except for the fact that currently, they get 120 hours, which means they get two weeks off.
Correct.
So we're cutting it from two weeks to one week. If you make the assumption we're going to have a 56-hour work week.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
From the JPA.
Right.
I said, if you want to compare it to a city employee.
Understand.
You would double it.
I understand. I understand. I was listening to that.
The numbers that are there, because the current JPA has a more lucrative vacation schedule than the City of San Carlos.
Do we have any idea of what our work week's going to be?
Not yet. We're waiting to get the chief on board to begin making operational decisions.
Do we have ranges?
So I wouldn't want to guess right now.
Okay, fine, all right. Did that help? I'm sorry. Great, great job I did here.
Further questions? Mr. Royce?
Yeah, I want to ask this question early, maybe Mr. Hawkins, you could answer this. For new firefighters coming onboard, you know, our mayor talked about our defined pension, which basically, you know, it's basically managed by an organization, has a guaranteed return, and when you retire, you get so much per year over your retirement. A defined contribution plan, which is in private businesses, basically, a company puts in money, you put in actually more money, and you manage it yourself. And I've had an interesting discussion over the past year or two with several people at lunch, and of course, the difference is how it's managed, and of course, its difference on what's happened in the stock market in the last three years. But there's still a question that I ask, I say, "So, would you want," and I don't know if these numbers really compare, but theoretically, the concept is, when you retire, do you want $50,000 a year for the rest of your life? Or would you like a half million dollars right now? That's what the difference is between the two plans, because the pension pays your so much percentage of your salary, where if you have your 401K, you have this lump sum, you could draw it as you want, but it's a big, big number, and there's pros and cons. Do you have any, before, I think we're heading towards where we are now with pension, but people keep bringing up the 401K. Is there any indication of opening that door to a defined contribution plan for firefighters? Or answer me, I don't know, it's...
I can only say that...
If you'd come up to my please, I'd like to hear that. Again, it's a guess, you're projecting to the future here.
I can only say that when a public safety or any public employee retires, because they put a fixed amount of money into the retirement plan for their entire career, regardless what the employer puts in, they have a cash amount in there when they retire. After 30 years, for a firefighter, probably in the area of $250,000. They have the option at retirement to take that cash out and just...
Oh, they do? They could take it as a month.
Take the money and go and receive no pension. And in my 30-years experience, I don't know anyone who's ever actually done that.
Okay.
So that might answer your question.
Good, that satisfies me. Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, I didn't know the basic fact that they could take it. I thought retirement is you have to take only so much per, really? Wow. Did you know that? Yeah, okay. Good, I feel bad.
I've not heard that.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
Then again, it doesn't look like anybody's ever done it, so.
No. Okay. People I go to lunch with are different. It's actually very mixed, the answer I get on that.
I guess we're trying to find the yeti.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
Well, Mr. Ahmad, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I got changes. I think some of this stuff, I mean, again, Mr. Malpe has indicated this is just a preliminary shot, but I can't vote for these, I can't vote for the preliminary shot, because I'm only going to vote for what I think is, should be in here, and I can't even, unfortunately, since I just got this 20 minutes ago, really have a great idea of, I'd like to spend more time with it, but I understand we're under the gun, so I'll make a fly on some of these things, but that's how I feel. I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
So, Mr. Griselli, here's what I would like to do, if there is...
That's why I looked to you, how you wanted to do it.
What I would like to do is if there is a motion on the primary resolution, we can take amendments.
Okay. Whatever you want.
You want to discuss this first?
We need a...
Motion and then...
Take a motion, we can discuss anything we like, but is there a motion on the resolution?
Remove Resolution Number 2011-30. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adopting the salary and benefit resolution for the City of San Carlos Fire Department.
Just clarification, I'd like to know, so are the specific, I'd just like to make sure that I understand each of these, are they part of that? Where's the, hang on here, let me get to the motion. Where's the motion?
It's on the, it's on the page of the attachment one.
Okay, got it, got it, got it.
Page three.
Got it. Again, just for clarification, I'd like to understand, I mean, the motion, I'd like to understand, is it pay, overtime, retirement, the items that are listed here?
Everything that's listed here, that's in the Fire Department Employee Salary Resolution afterwards, is what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the staff recommendation, and that's it, with no amendments.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Are you seconding, Mr. Royce?
Yeah, let's take that to vote. I'll second that as a starting point, yes.
So we have a second, and I'll invite discussion. Mr. Grokot, you wanted to...
Well, I think Mr. Griselli had started, but sure, I'll start, if you like. Number one, on the retirement formula, I don't think it's a good operation when you have one type of benefit for a fire inspector and something different for the firefighters themselves. And number two, I have trouble with two at 50, simply because, really, the savings on 2% at 55 and 2% at 50 is not all that great in terms of percentages, I think. It'll work out to be about 1% or 2%. That's something I would rather keep it, similar to what we have, the three at 55, and then we could negotiate on the contribution level of the employees, if we wanted to find back that savings, that 1% or 2% savings between the two plans. The reason I feel that way is this. Most employees of fire departments, you would find historically, once they get hired... Most employees of fire departments, you would find historically, once they get hired, and it's usually at a pretty young age, around 25 years old or so, they look at it as a career, and it's a little bit like being on a sports team. You want to stay with the team you're on for as long as you can. And if you can start with a fire department and retire with a fire department, that's what most of these guys prefer. Because again, they look at it as, as a career. So if you have a retirement age of 50, you just gave away, gave away five years of service from an employee who you've spent money to train and, and all that, to be familiar with your city and so forth. So, you know, I, that's, I don't like the 50. It's not a good retirement age. It was brought about by poor legislation many years ago by the state of California as a concession to employee unions at the time. It's a poor age, and especially in our day and age, when, you know, even athletes, professional athletes, amateur athletes are staying in the game longer, firefighters with safety equipment and so forth are staying in the game longer. Why would we want to set up a retirement system that encourages them to leave at age 50?
Let me just clarify your, I want to make certain I understood what you said. Let me know the percentage, but the at 50 was what you had a challenge with for safety.
Yeah.
You were willing to go to at 55.
Right. And unfortunately, there is no, there's no 2% at 55, there's no such existing structure. Now, I guess we could come up with it, but I don't sure we're allowed.
There's 2% at 55 for miscellaneous, and you could certainly put your firefighters into 2% at 55.
If, if, yeah, I could more go with that, because again, my biggest argument on this is the age 50. I don't think it's the right age. We can dicker on the percentage, I suppose.
Okay, interesting. Mr. Griselli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My problem with some of the, which, some of these other items, as well as with this one, I agree with Mr. Grokot, except I, I think it should be 3% at 55, because you look across the board, and, and that's everywhere, even at Millbrae and Pacifica has that. I worry about the fact that I, we're starting from scratch. We would, I mean, my idea would be that we would hopefully draw, we need to hire, I'm sorry, Ms. Menal, how many people? 20? Sorry? 22? I would like to hopefully say that we could get 50% of the folks that are working for us now to come over, at least 50%, because then you have some institutional history. If we get three or four to come over, because we have, let's say, a situation where we just, we're at the bottom, so to speak, I just feel like we're, we're basically starting literally from scratch, and I know we are.
If I may interrupt you for just a moment, Mr. Griselli. We've, we've tried to establish this a couple of different times. This is a resolution.
Understand.
For new employees.
Understand.
The council's pleasure.
Understand.
For existing JPA employees could be quite different.
I think, Mr. Malpe, you misunderstood your question. I don't think that's going to happen. If they're, if they're necessarily, we're not going to give, Joe Smith is not going to get a different salary deal, or if he doesn't work for the JPA now, or if he does. And you explain that to me if they are. We're not going to have anybody.
Give it to me one more time.
I think you misunderstood his question, maybe I'm wrong. He, he, Mr. Ramad thinks that because you worked, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ramad, that if you worked in the JPA, you could possibly get a better deal than what we have here. If we approve this whole thing tonight, let's say, and that's the way we go.
You could have a different.
There's a separate process, there's a separate process involving labor negotiations.
Right.
With the JPA.
Right.
That could lead to a transitional MOU.
Yes.
That could lead to different conditions of employment for existing JPA employees.
Okay, I misunderstood. I apologize. My mistake. You spoke to him about that, I wasn't aware of that. Is that legal?
It's called red circling.
That's correct. In fact, when we talked to you last March, you'll probably recall when we talked about the Cal Fire option, we said we would recommend red circling.
I don't need to be educated on that. You know, that information was not provided to me. Obviously, two members understood it really well, because they're on the fire board.
Through the chair. We did it when we went to the Sheriff's Department for the tax.
I understood we did, we did that for the Sheriff's Department for the tax, but I'm, I'm asking, this is a completely different deal here, in my opinion. So that's why I'm trying to understand it. So, in effect, it's red circling then, is what you're saying.
It, it's possible.
Possible.
I mean, there, there is a, there's a labor process going on through the JPA that requires the city council to approve major, you're familiar with the JPA.
Got it.
We just, we just met in closed session and discussed those items on a long list that were presented by the union to the JPA.
I get it.
So those are the items that are under consideration.
Okay. Well, like I said, again, I still go back to the point where I won't be voting for this the way it is. I'd like some amendments, but it's up to the council on how they'd want to do it. So, just, I, I just, it's too, I'm concerned about the folks that are going to come over to this, whoever they are. And I'm very concerned, and maybe we are, we have a different setup then, which we're not even looking at for the folks, what is the red circle number then, theoretically? What's that? I haven't seen that number. Is it here?
Well, that could be up to the.
It could be anything.
Could be up to the existing salary, which is there.
Right, okay, so thank you.
Mr. Royce?
Question here, our city manager. Let's make the assumption there's one set of, of hiring, and we allow anybody to, to, to put an application in whether or not they're existing part of the JPA or a new firefighter. With an existing firefighter who's been there 20 or 30 years, they're currently getting 3%. So they're, at 20 years, they've got 60%. At 30 years, they have 90%. They now start with this new organization at 2%. They keep what they have, is that correct?
That's correct.
So someone at 20 years works another 10 years, he worked the first two-thirds of pension at three, the last third if he stays at two. Or if they're retiring in three or four or five years, staying part of the same organization, the same team, I look at that, especially someone, you try to definitely take, take care of the people that provided the most service for the most years. I think the financial impact lessens as you get to that 20, 25, 30-year. The real impact is the person that's only been there five years or the brand-new firefighter. I just want to make sure that that is part of the, the financial impact and fairness and looking at how we treat our people here. So, I think that's very important.
Mr. Klein?
Through the chair. I think it's also important, it's been said a couple of times, that we want to look at what people are paying around us. Let's not forget that we were the first one to go through this, we were the first one to be making these reforms. All of these cities around us are going to have to. You have Pacifica at 3% at 55, they just lost a renewal, not even a new tax, a renewal of their fire assessment tax. You don't think they're going to be doing this? There's a lot of cities around here that are going to have to do this. The, the bad legislation that was brought up for the 50, that also brought the 3% with it. The 3% hasn't been something that's been around forever, it's only a couple, a little bit over a decade old. We need to realize that we need to come to somewhere sustainable, and this is a starting point. We're going to have to negotiate in two months, three months, or whatever it is. So for me, the reason I push for this resolution is I'd like to have a, to have a strong starting point, at least publicly. If we're going to, we're going to break and we're going to give everything away again, at least, at least let's attempt to be strong on the outset. And let's attempt to, you know, keep these costs down. If not, we're just going to end up here in another year again. So, I mean, I really would push the council to take this, and if you want to bicker about little things, I'm sure the union's going to bring us, whatever union it is, is going to bring us a whole laundry list of what they would like to change. Why don't we let them bring that to us when we get there? Let's go with this as a starting point, and then we can negotiate, which is part of the job. I don't see why we're negotiating up here and already giving stuff away that hasn't even been asked for yet. It just seems like a backwards negotiation. We're already showing how weak we are when it comes to getting into closed doors. And I just don't think that's a good thing to do. I don't think that's good negotiation tactic.
Through the chair.
Mr. Grokot?
So I would, I would still come back at the, the issue of 55 versus 50. I don't, I don't want to set up a program even out of the starting gate that encourages firefighters.
Oh, I'm all for the 55, that's fine, but I, it's the 2%, that's the big number.
Is that an amendment you want to make?
Well, I'm sure we'd need more discussion, but yeah, I'd love to make that, but I'm sure we want more discussion.
Further points? Mr. Royce?
Sorry, I pieced me own this, but I think I'm down to, a starting point, you know, this again is two-thirds of our cost. I think the pay, at least from a starting point, again, that first stake in the ground is a good starting point, I think we'll see some change there, one way or the other. It's all part of the same, got to look at everything. Benefits, you got to look at pension, you need to look at everything and talk to all the players. So from a starting point, I'm comfortable. I've been a strong proponent of overtime. I think this 28-day is more realistic on what the definition of overtime is. I think benefits have been pretty good in most cases. We're out of whack in one or two areas, you know, I've talked a couple of times about the sick, sick time, how it's abused, it's not used for sick time. We're making changes there. I think that's what we need to do. Where things have gotten out of whack and abused, I'll use the word, we need to fix 55, I think is fine. The 2%, I think, based on my prior question, I think it's, it's fair, because most people for the years of service are still going to have a very attractive retirement. And all the other benefits, again, there could be some, some change, but again, for trying to fine-tune something as complex as this to get started, I think we need to get started. That's my conclusion.
I'll just put a few comments in here.
Through the chair.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Grokot?
In terms of process, are you expecting, like, three amendments or just one amendment? Do you want to go through these things point by point where we have issues, or?
I'll take the amendments as they come. If you want to do, I'd prefer if you've got one amendment, let's see if it gets a second, and we'll discuss it and vote on the amendment.
And then go to the next?
Yep.
All right.
Would you like to make an amendment?
Sure, I, I would amend the retirement formula to be, and I'm not sure we can go with that, Mr. Malpe, but if you think we can.
We'll have to look into it.
Then I would, I would put it at 2% at 55, understanding again that, yeah, it's going to be negotiated later, so.
I'll second that.
I'm comfortable with that.
Is there further discussion on that point? I'll call the roll.
Councilmember Griselli?
No.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ramad?
Yes. Mr. Grokot, further amendments?
I am not comfortable with the vacation accrual or the sick time accrual. I just, I don't think it's fair to say to an employee in their first year of employment that they get less than a week's vacation and they accrue less than a week's sick time. I think that's, I don't think that's fair.
So let me turn the question around.
Yeah.
What is fair?
Well, it's kind of hard to say, because Mr. Malpe doesn't know what kind of work week we're going to be offering these guys. If it were a 56-hour work week, I suppose 56, at least for a starting point, 56 hours would be fair. If we're going to have a 72-hour work week, then 72 hours would be fair. But to ask some fellow to not even be able to get a week's vacation in his first year of employment, that's not fair.
Chief Skinner, I see that you're here. I'm, I'm looking at your vacation and sick leave schedule. Could you tell us very briefly what you do for new hires? And thank you for coming this evening.
You're welcome. New hires for sick leave accrual, they get one workday per month, per year. So they get 12 shifts a year, sick leave, on a 56-hour work week.
12 shifts?
12, 24-hour shifts.
And that's sick and for their vacation?
For vacation, well, just like.
Looks like you've got 80 hours.
80 hours is a starting, and then it goes up to 200 hours, max. But two years, maximum accrual.
Okay.
That's for 40-hour, and then for 24-hour shifts, it's 120, which is five days, 24-hour shifts, and then up to 280 for the 24-hour shift.
Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Malpe, maybe you can add some color to this, because I think folks are struggling with, is it one week for the first year, is it two weeks? How, how was this number come about?
Well, we looked at what was out there, and these numbers were seen in, I believe, Cal Fire contracts and maybe some others. So they had a basis in folks in the fire profession working in these, in this county receiving this type of benefit. Certainly, the firefighter's schedule, forgetting the 72 or the 56, but just talking about the 24-hour operation, the nature of it, does make changes. On an hourly basis, in other words, you see the sick leave at 12 shifts a year equates to quite a few hours. Many, many more hours than any other type of employee, police or miscellaneous, would typically earn in sick time. That's the nature of, of the fire profession. Looking at some of the large accruals that we've seen in the JPA, we believe that that has a lot to do with the, this particular issue. In addition, given the vacation, we felt that this was a low, this was a starting point. We were not surprised to hear the council talking about this particular item. I don't think it would be at all inappropriate if you wanted to raise the vacation number up and increase it. Like I said, if you were to double that number, it would, it would equate to what the average miscellaneous employee were to get. Another way that you may want to handle it right now is just to simply say that you believe the policy ought to be that they get a week's vacation after their first year of employment, and that you'll be more, you know, that you'll let the actual work week inform what that final number is.
So you're telling me also, we've cut in half, like, a miscellaneous employee that comes to work for the City of San Carlos, in their first year of employment, they get two weeks vacation?
That's what I'm telling you, yes.
Okay, I misunderstood you before. I, I guess, hearing that, then I would, I don't see a reason to treat firefighters and paramedics any differently than we do anybody else, unless we're looking really soon down the road to doing the same thing to everybody else.
Well, of course, I disagree with that general statement, but go ahead.
Which general statement?
No, that you would treat everybody like everybody else. Staff was, is basically trying to put the firefighters in with the same, as I understand it, with the same, many of the same benefits that all the other city workers have.
Right, but what, what the city manager's said is that if we hired somebody in miscellaneous tomorrow, in their first year of employment, they would accrue two weeks vacation.
Oh, I understand. But your statement you said where you don't want to treat them any differently, I do want to treat them differently.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's the statement I disagree with you on.
I see, yeah. Well, respective to vacation, I want to treat them the same.
Okay.
So, Mr. Grokot, an option is also to recognize that we can assume that the firefighters will unionize, and this is probably an item that would be negotiated through the union. Do we want to negotiate it here, or should we wait until the union comes back with its best ideas?
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, and in that regard, then I would at least make a starting point, one week's vacation. As Mr. Malpe said, it would, I wouldn't put it in terms of hours, I'd just put it in terms of whatever the shift is that we come up with, whether it's 56 or 72. A person, you know, I, I know in the private sector, and there, you know, there's companies that really make their profits by cutting everything else to the bone, including their employees, and they only offer a week's vacation.
So, if I can frame your, your amendment would be, to rephrase this, to state, first So if I can frame your amendment would be, to rephrase this, to state, first year new employees would receive a week of vacation based on...
And sick.
And sick.
And sick, yeah.
And can I take that as the amendment?
Sure. That'd be fine.
Can I have a second? Actually, I'll second it for further discussion.
Yes. Yes, second.
Is there further discussion on this point? Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
No.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes. I just got to look at that 3-2 for a second. Mr. Grocott, further amendments?
I think we just covered... I had the other one marked with sick leave, and I think we just covered it.
You did, sir.
That's it.
Mr. Royce, any amendments? Mr. Klein?
Nope.
Mr. Grisilli?
A couple. I think the frequency of pay, everyone else except for Cal Fire gets paid at least twice a week or biweekly or every other day or whatever. And I think once a month, I think is a... Of course, I've never worked at one being paid once a month. Maybe other people have.
Yeah.
So that one is one that I think we should... And I realize, a lot of it has to do, and again, I understand what staff is trying to do here. They're trying to lower the costs, fit it in the system. I'm not criticizing them, but I just think that isn't appropriate. I think it should be twice.
Is that, through the chair, out there, city manager, is that going to be a large cost for us to do that? It's probably pretty minimal, correct?
We're, yeah, we're looking into that right now.
That's going to be amendment if someone wanted a second.
Second.
All right. So we have a... We would like to change the pay period to bi-monthly.
No, biweekly.
Twice a month.
Twice a month.
Okay.
At least.
Twice a month. Yeah. I don't think, I don't think 24 or... I think what you're saying is 24 or 26, either one would satisfy this particular amendment.
Correct. You don't want to go a full month.
If one was easier to accomplish than the other.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be a problem with 24 or 26.
Oftentimes, there's too much month for the paycheck, so. We'll call the roll on this one.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes. Further amendments, Ms. Gro...
Sorry, at least one more here. The sleep exemption. Looking at the ones, again, we're given, and again, I don't know what else is out there. This is the only one that we had yes on. Now, I know Ms. Menon Hall indicated it's a half a million dollars. Is that right? Savings supposedly? Did I hear you say that? Oh, total of...
Overtime savings. It's not just sleep exemption. It's total overtime.
I apologize. I misunderstood what you said.
Sleep exemption is included in that.
Okay. You know, I guess you get up and then you have a little card next to your bed, I guess, and you have to remember when you wake up to check it off or do whatever. I don't know. I'm sorry. You've got better things to do than check off a box, in my opinion. So I think this is, I think it should be thrown out, personally.
Through the chair.
Your amendment?
Yes.
So we have an amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second? Is there a discussion?
Through the chair, can I ask a question? I didn't appreciate the jovial nature with the way it's like checking a box. To our city manager, how do we count for sleep exemption? They're not checking a box, are they?
How are we going to keep track of that? You're right.
Well, I would assume that it would be done through the nature of the calls and the dispatch system. I mean, if they were out on a call, we would have, it would be logged.
So you're saying firefighters aren't going to keep track of it?
I don't think they're going to have to keep track of it. I think the management of the department through the dispatch system will be able to track when firefighters were called out and when they weren't. So I think as part of the data collection system, that would just simply be one data point that would be built in to the system. I don't think, I don't think they're going to have to have a card to punch right next to their bed.
That's what I thought it was going to be, because somebody has to keep track of it. So I assumed they were going to have to keep track of it. Wrong assumption, sorry. And I wasn't making a jovial comment on that. That wasn't jovial. It was more sarcastic than anything else.
Yeah, I used the wrong term, sarcastic.
Okay. But you're right, it was sarcastic.
Further discussion?
Nope.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
No.
Mayor Ahmad?
No. That amendment fails. Any further amendments, Mr. Grisilli?
Last one I have is for holidays. Apparently, under this, we pay straight time for holidays. Is that correct, Ms. Menon Hall? I think we should pay overtime for holidays. I don't know. I guess other people do get paid straight time for holidays. I've never seen that personally in my work history, but perhaps that's done. Anyway, that would be an amendment.
So we have an amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Point of discussion, Mr. Malpe, does this... I was trying to figure this out. Do we recognize holidays?
Yeah.
There are 10 paid holidays.
Right. Yes, correct.
So if somebody is working on Veterans Day, let me just pull that one out, that is a federally recognized holiday. If somebody's working on that day, which would be a normal holiday, would they get that as a floating holiday? How would that work?
You know, I'm not sure that we have... Are any of the Teamsters scheduled to work holidays, or is it on a callback basis if they work holidays? Yeah, so we don't have a situation in the city right now where employees are scheduled to work holidays. If they're called back, there's a provision for overtime, of course, subject to FLSA and whatnot, and that's similar to what was outlined in the resolution in terms of callback pay. But we don't have a similar instance. This is another instance where just the nature of the firefighter work schedule is very different than typical employees.
But, excuse me, on the other hand, we... If I'm understanding how this thing is set up, we're saying for the firefighters, it's paid straight hours for working holidays, and then it's a 40... If you work a 40-hour work week, so if you're the fire inspector and you work on the holiday, you get paid for a holiday.
Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be scheduled to work on a holiday.
But if you did, I mean, there could be, I suppose, a reason for a fire inspector to work on the holiday? No?
You know, that's a question that I would have to take a closer look at the FLSA to see. I don't believe you're required under the law to be paid time and a half. It depends on how you define, how you've defined your FLSA regulations, because you haven't worked 40 hours. You've only worked presumably 32, so I'm not sure that that's necessarily the case.
Well, it's in here, is the reason I ask it, because it's set up that way for the fire inspector. 40-hour work week, 10 paid holidays. I guess, for matter of discussion, Mr. Mayor, I did second it, and I'm in favor of it, because even, it may be the nature of the job, and you sort of understand that when you sign up for that career. But on the other hand, you know, I like being around my family on holidays. So I think for me, that's why I'm in favor of it, because there's a sacrifice there for anybody who goes into public safety. And sure, they know they're working on the holiday, but I think we, as the public, expect them to, and we ought to pay them a little extra for that. Now, the negotiating item, and I would just, I guess, just leave it open, is how many holidays. You'll see on here, we've got 12, we've got 10, we've got 13, we've got 10. I would probably stick closer to the 10. I don't know what those 10 days are, but I would, I would keep it at a number more like that.
So to rephrase the amendment, it is, or restate the amendment, is for time and a half on holidays.
For working holidays.
For working holidays.
Right.
All right, that is the amendment.
How many holidays?
It's defined by the city.
And the holidays would equate to how many it's agreed to.
Is there a definition, city holidays?
Yeah, I think what, I think you could just propose the, yeah, the city's holiday schedule.
How many are those?
Ten days. Ten, I believe.
Ten? Okay. It is 10? All right.
Further discussion? Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
Councilmember Royce?
No.
Mayor Ahmad?
No. Further amendments, Mr. Grisilli?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your indulgence.
Okay. Mr. Klein, any amendments?
No, I got my one in.
I'm not going to offer an amendment, but I do want to offer some direction to staff. One thing that I think the council has talked about considerably, and I would like to see come back, is the fact that we would like safety employees, if at all possible, to live in San Carlos. So to the extent that we can offer homeowner programs, low-interest loans, down payment help, anything else like that, I would like to encourage that. I would like to see our firefighters truly be part of our community. And in times of emergency or anything else, having folks who are here, know the community, live here, makes a difference. So it won't be an amendment, but it is a direction that... This is something that I would like to see staff work on and see if we can actually put some incentives in place for the employees of this. Gentlemen, we've got the amended resolution in front of us. Ms. Bowen, can I get you to go through those amendments real quickly?
Absolutely. Motion was made in second for the resolution as a whole, then the amendments came forward. Motion passed four to one for increasing the retirement formula from 2% at 50 to 2 at 55. Second amendment, motion passed three to two. First year new employees would receive a week of vacation and sick leave. Amendment number three, motion passed 5-0 to change the payday to either twice a month or biweekly. Motion amendment number four failed, two to three. Move to eliminate the sleep exemption provision. Next motion failed to pay overtime for working holidays, and that was it.
Ms. Bowen, it should read for the retirement that either we were increasing the age of retirement or decreasing the formula of the retirement to 2% at 55. We weren't increasing the retirement formula.
I think it's also important to note on the vacation and sick time that it was one week of vacation and one week of sick time, as opposed to one week's vacation and sick time.
Got it.
Before I call the vote, there was one point of consistency. I'm leaving Mr. Grocott for this, and actually, Mr. Malpe. The fire inspector, we have a 2 and 1/2 at 55, but the firefighters were 2 at 55 by the amendment. Should we make that consistent?
Or can we get the reasoning why they would be different?
Well, they're different because the 2.5 at 55 is the current miscellaneous system that's in place right now. You've tiered it, but that tier hasn't gone into effect. And so to bring over a miscellaneous employee means that's the tier that they would go into.
So legally, we're stuck with the 2 and 1/2.
That's what's in place now.
Okay. And we would have to tear it later on.
Okay, so that would be...
It's already, it's already cured. It just hasn't taken effect yet.
Understood. Okay.
I have one question before we go.
Mr. Grocott?
And that is, while this is a resolution for salary and benefit, I'm assuming it's not a complete MOU, because there's nothing in here about strike, those kinds of things, other issues that...
That's correct. There's many other provisions that legally can only be negotiated through an MOU, such as those kinds of things. There will be some other items that may come forward related to working conditions that need to be amended in the city's rules and regulations, as opposed to a salary and benefit resolution, that you might see show up in a typical MOU. And those types of items, we're working with Chief Skinner to identify, such as how one goes about requesting days off and those kinds of, those kinds of more operational procedures.
Great. Seeing no further discussion, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Grisilli?
No.
Councilmember Grocott?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little confused by the process. What exactly are we voting on, then?
This is now the amended resolution.
So we voted on pieces?
We voted on the amendments.
The item.
Okay.
And now this is the...
All right. Yes, I think I understand what you did then.
You're registering a yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes. Mr. Malpe, is there a further... We're not on B yet.
Yeah, there's, there's a second item related to the class specifications.
Thank you, Ms. Menon Hall.
Right. So real quickly, before you tonight, are the job classification specifications for the four positions that the city will need to hire? The firefighter, firefighter, paramedic, fire inspector, and fire captain. The details for each of these are included in your staff report. Our consultants from TriData and the Redwood City Fire Chief Skinner have reviewed and approved these. John Montanaro is here, he's in the audience as well. So they're both here to answer any questions you may have.
Gentlemen, Mr. Grisilli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How does this compare to what we have now in the JPA?
I will, I'll defer to TriData. I believe it's very close.
How, if you could come up and... How does this compare to what we have now? All these, all these items?
That was a hard question.
Mayor, members of council, all of these job specs are fairly close. They're really a generalized statement of the job. And so these change a little bit because they focus on being a good employee, too. But generally, it's a generalized statement of the job. They're pretty close. The words are different, they show up in different places, but the overall result is close to the same.
Further questions?
Just to clarify...
It doesn't do it for me, but it's okay.
Just a clarification that, Ms. Menon Hall, you said Chief Skinner has reviewed these and has accepted them.
Mr. Royce? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, is there any public comment on this point? Seeing none? Any further discussion?
I'd actually like to add just a little bit to...
Mr. Malpe?
Councilmember Grisilli's question. I think while overall these class specifications are in many ways similar to the class specification which we have, there are two important distinctions in my mind. The first is that you're, instead of just creating a firefighter class specification and then having specialty pay for a firefighter, you're creating two classifications, one that is just a firefighter and one that is a firefighter, paramedic, that has that 8.8% additional pay built into it. The other important distinction, I believe, is that we're not creating an engineer-operator class specification, that those duties are built in to both of these firefighter classifications, which is something different from how the JPA has operated. So I would point those out to you, council member.
One more question, sorry.
Please, sir.
Is this also negotiable?
Are class specs negotiable? Not typically, but yes, certainly, they can be. It doesn't come up a whole lot, but yes, I believe these would be.
Thank you.
I'm, through the chair, I move approval of resolution number 2011...
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adopting classification specifications for the City of San Carlos Fire Department and authorizing recruitment for positions.
Motion to have a second.
Second, Pat.
Have a second for a discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad?
Yes. Item 11B, consideration of adopting a resolution of the City Council authorizing city manager to sign an agreement with the Planning Center slash DCNE in the amount of $38,193 to prepare a trails project plan. Director Long.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Doug Long, Parks and Recreation Director. If you'd indulge me just for a second, I'll call up a PowerPoint that will help us through this presentation.
Did you hear that?
If you recall, we.
Sorry.
If you recall, we had initially set aside somebody in the capital improvement projects budget for a trails master plan. It was $150,000. And in doing some background to develop a master plan, I did call some colleagues and discovered that it was probably best to do what we consider a project plan, which identified very specific trail projects. This would allow for any environmental review to not grow stale, that we could actually have some shovel-ready projects. So what we did, we put an RFP out, a request for a consultant to come in and do a project plan that had trail specifications and had environmental review. The environmental review would include an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration. So the trails plan is what we consider a four-segment plan. We've identified four segments that we would like to improve. You're familiar with some of them, but I do have a map that's a little bit difficult to see here, but I'll see if I can point this out for you. This is Eaton, and this is Big Canyon Open Space here. The yellow lines are just a very close proximity. This is not intended to be entirely accurate, just to let you know what we have in mind for these. This is Britton Avenue here, and this is Tremonto and Appian Way. We would create an access point here so people in the neighborhood could actually walk down Tremonto and access the trail there. And then there would be trail improvements throughout Eaton. It would add about 4/10 of a mile to the existing trails. And in that particular area, I've lost my, there we go, in that particular area, there would be, need to be some bridges to pass over some seasonal water culverts and help navigate the trails. Then on the other side, and this is again, Big Canyon, would allow trail users to walk along the existing trail, but coming back or actually going out, whichever they choose, they would drop down and it would give them a different perspective of the open space. So that's kind of what we are looking to do. This would add about 3/10 of a mile to the existing trails here. So it would give them a whole different experience in each one of these open spaces and really add to the trails that we have existing. And that's two of the projects. This project you're familiar with. This is access to Pulgas Ridge Open Space Trail controlled by Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space. This is simply opening the gate there and providing access to what will be an improved trail. The trail will be improved by Mid Pen, Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space. So the environmental review will be limited to this area here. This is Los Vientos, and they'll be looking at any environmental issues, including parking and access of that nature. And finally, this is the open space at Devonshire Canyon. We're working on purchasing some property here to, there's an easement issue there. If we purchase the property, obviously the easement issue goes away. There's an existing trail easement that you see on the blue line here. This particular project would be an out-and-back project. There are other easement issues around here. Eventually, we would like to be able to link up all the way to this area here. However, there are some easement issues associated with that. So right now, we would like to have a presence in here. We do have a trail easement in this location, so people would be able to walk out, look at the canyon, some great views from here, and then walk back out at Vista Park. DCNE, you may be familiar with them. That's the same consultant that helped us update our general plan. They're very versed in environmental review, and they were the lowest bidders and very capable of doing this project. The timeline for this, we anticipate the consultant to draft a project plan by August, and shortly thereafter, that we'll have our master trail builder, Tom Morris, who's in the audience this evening, start working some of the trails that are part of this plan. So within that information, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Perfect. We do have some public comment. Jeff Galvin? John Seelig? You want to go ahead and come up? Please, please. Thank you, sir.
I travel a lot, and thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Mayor and council people, members. I live on Los Vientos, and I travel a lot, so I haven't been able to be there for a lot of the public meetings that you had up till now. And I know that my neighbors have been not very happy about the idea of having that trail opened. I noticed tonight, when I was looking at the picture, it looked almost like you're going to force the parking onto Crestview in that empty space, and then you're going to have a way that you walk down to the trail that looks like it goes through the water land? Is that right? Or are you going to park on?
That's just an illustration that it's been around for a bit.
Yeah?
Thank you for the question.
Just to clarify, there are no specifications to where the parking is going to be. The environmental study will provide us that information. So this is part of the study. It'll say, you know, what they recommend in terms of parking and access to that particular entry point.
Okay.
All right, well, I think at this moment, it would only be appropriate to just voice my strong opposition to having parking on Los Vientos in Best Way. They're narrow roads with no outlet on the other side, means people making U-turns, difficult to getting emergency equipment through, if you've ever seen like a party on that street, which is rare, by the way. But you'd see that, you know, once you have cars parked all on just one side, it gets a little bit difficult to navigate and could actually be dangerous. So, you know, I guess I'll wait to see what the plan is, but I know that, you know, a lot of my neighbors are really concerned about, you know, the impact on the neighborhood. And so since I hadn't had a chance to comment before, I did want to come down and just say that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If I could add one more thing. One other issue that happens with, you know, when you sort of alert people to that area is that, you know, when I come back, you know, for a week after I've been out of town for three weeks, I go across the street and clean up the used condoms and occasional bottles and things like that. And, you know, it's, you know, bringing more people right onto that street, and, you know, that's another kind of negative thing if you're concerned about litter. And, you know, of course, we're really concerned about that on the street. So, you know, you may finally have another, develop another issue with, you know, either law enforcement in that area, making sure that people aren't parking overnight or whatever. So that may come up later, you know, if you do put the access in there and cause a lot of parking and a lot of people coming in there, that may be an issue that develops later. So I just wanted to alert you to that as well.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Gentlemen's time has expired. Mr. Seelig. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Seelig.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. John Seelig, resident of San Carlos, 1089 Lupin Way. I'm here to speak in support of your adopting this resolution. From my standpoint, and I'll explain a little bit later, it's logical to assume that increased access increases respect for nature and enjoyment for it amongst the community, and also in this era of increased obesity among the general population, it's a very positive step towards promoting mental and physical health. Last fall, after the public meeting out on Los Vientos, I forwarded to council, or at least Mayor Royce at the time, three studies I found that really underlined the community-enhancing value of a overall trail system in as much as you can possibly bring to bear, you know. And I respect the concerns with regards to public safety. I respect the concerns with regards to property value impact. Those studies go a long way to, I believe, explain away those issues. And at the time, I believe Officer Robbins from then San Carlos Police Department addressed public safety issues and did declare that, or did state at that point that there are no other, there were no more or less significant public safety issues at that location than there are in other places in San Carlos. In both my use of trails, fairly extensively in the mid-peninsula area, as well as my job as a Realtor, I go by these trail locations quite frequently. In San Carlos, at Britton and Eaton, in Redwood City, at Sunset and Glenlock, as well as the old Stagecoach Road location for Edgewood Park, as well as out in the Portola Valley area, Windy Hill, Toyo and Corder Madera area, I've seen very little evidence of a public safety issue and nothing but a community-enhancing aspect to having these trailheads in these areas. So with that, and for all the right reasons, I urge you to support adopting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Kay Bonney and Bonnie McClure.
Kay left.
Kay left, sorry. And Ms. Bonnie, I've got you down here for 11B and 11C. Is that correct? Perfect.
Okay, Bonnie McClure, member of the San Carlos Belmont CR Club. We are very happy to see this resolution come forward, and we hope that you will support it. And I support everything that the prior gentleman had to say about public health and enjoyment of trails. The only thing that I would like to say is that I hope that you get a whole lot of new volunteers. Our CR clubbers are way up in years with gray hair like I, and we need other people out there helping. But we do urge you to have expert supervision of the trail building, suggest expertise such as the trail setter or somebody like that. You just need one person out there. And I hope this report will be very careful to define grades for erosion control. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I don't have a speaker card from Tom Davids, but we're talking about trails. Mr. Davids?
If over a decade up here wasn't enough.
Yeah. Well, let the mayor emeritus speak on trails.
Well, thank you for the invite, Mr. Mayor and council. It has been a long time in coming, and we're grateful that we are at a point where we can have the resolution approved and we can move forward. I recall many years ago, we came up with a master map. Greg was a part of that process. And it's surprising how many trails there are within the city that sort of begin and end but don't connect. And our hope over time is that there is a strong movement toward connection. I also think that this is a great way to start, and I appreciate the folks who have some concern about how it's going to be implemented. However, I think that it's too soon to be too worried about that. We do need a study, and having the study completed allows us to go ahead. So we, at the Trail Committee, Tom Morris, Jackie Yan is here, myself, Catherine couldn't be here, but we encourage you to proceed and so that we can proceed. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Davids. Gentlemen, what is the council's pleasure? Mr. Grisilli?
Could I ask a quick question of Mr. Long, please? Mr. Long, on your map, you have the, if you could put up the Los Vientos one, where you have the line drawn? Is that the only option that's going to be considered by the report?
Yes.
So you're not going to consider going, talking to the PUC or going on the other side of that fence?
That's correct. PUC reiterated their original response, which was to say that they would consider a long-term trails plan that would include access to PUC property, but they would not entertain an idea of accessing Pulgas Ridge from their property as just a way to avoid Los Vientos.
So basically, the study is going to speak to, and certainly should, speak to the impacts that are going to be happening if that gate is open?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I think I have a problem with that in that we're not studying any of the, anyway. I live in that area, and I can see that bus coming 100 miles away, although hopefully the report will give us some other options, but I may not be able to support this report because of that.
Understood. Mr. Royce?
Yeah, Mr. Long, just one recommendation on the scope of services. You list various things we're doing. One thing, I've heard at a few of the meetings, this one and people who hike Eaton was garbage slash dog waste pickup or facility or service.
Right.
At the trailhead. So if you, I'd recommend adding that.
Mr. Grokot?
I have a question in terms of process and exactly the impact of what we're doing here, because I have similar concerns to Mr. Grisilli regarding the Los Vientos, just in that, you know, sensitive to the neighborhood and the concerns that they have. What we're doing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we're adopting this trail plan.
No, we're actually okaying.
General plan for trails.
Requesting that we hire a consultant to develop a project plan.
Okay.
And once that plan has been formulated, it will come back to the council for adoption.
And each of these specific projects would come, go through their own process for approval?
They will all be included in this process. So they'll look at parking at all of the locations. They will look at environmental issues at all of the locations, at all four, each four locations.
Let me try to put the question in a different way. If we approve this tonight, what does that, where does that put this particular project?
Nothing will happen until after the report is completed and they provide an environmental review, an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration at that point.
And next step?
At that point, the council will be more informed of the environmental issues that may occur there and any mitigations that may be put into effect to help those.
Okay.
But ultimately, it doesn't, this is not a request to open the gate at this point.
All right. When does that come about, or I guess as importantly, or more importantly, is when does that give the public, like this gentleman might want to come back, this other gentleman may want to come back and speak about the project, and I'm sure many other people would, when would that take place? Or how would that take place?
Okay, when we present the final project plan to council, and at that point, the community, it may say, it's not a good idea to do that because of A, B, and C. It may say, it's a good idea to do that because we can mitigate anything. So it may say one of those two things. That doesn't mean we have to do it. At that point, council can say, we like three of the four. We're not particularly married to Los Vientos, so we would like to see the gate closed there because, you know, in our estimation, that's going to be too much a burden for the public. At that point, it's the council's choice, and the community gets another bite at the apple.
Okay. And I guess I would like a little bit of a promise on the part of staff, because I've seen this happen before, to reapprove something like this, and then when the project is presented, it's stated, well, council approved XYZ, when we're just looking at something that's kind of a planning issue, if you will, but then our action is used as leverage, sometimes in a staff report or something, to argue that, you know, this has already been approved, it's in the general plan, or whatever.
Right.
As though that's a reason just to carte blanche, saying, okay, we'll do it. So I'm just.
I understand. And I understand the sensitivity of that particular issue, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Klein?
I'm approving a resolution number 2011.
Did I cut in front of you? Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing the city manager to re-sign contract to the Planning Center/DCNE to develop the trails project plan.
You can second it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli.
No.
Councilmember Grokot.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Royce.
Yes.
Mayor Ahmad.
Yes. Thank you, sir. And now we're moving to item 11C, report on Plan Bay Area Sustainable Community Strategy, Initial Vision Scenario, a regional effort to prepare a Bay Area Land Use Transportation and Greenhouse Gas Emissions Strategy. Mr. Savay.
Good evening, all of the mayor, members of the city council. As noted, this is about the sustainable community strategy and what they call an initial vision scenario, and it's really a first blush effort at preparing some numbers for housing, climate action, and jobs to plug into the SCS model. And as you may recall, I came before you in January and gave you an overview of the entire process. And so essentially, again, this is a first blush effort, and they provided some numbers for San Carlos. We looked at those numbers. We compared them to our general plan, and what we found out is that in terms of the housing numbers, they're about 1,844 units above what is projected in our general plan out to the year 2035. In terms of the jobs numbers, they're under the job numbers that we had projected. In terms of the climate action plan, our climate action plan is more aggressive than what they are proposing. In conclusion, what they're looking for is some guidance from our city. They want a letter saying what our findings are at this point. Then they'll take that into consideration as they move forward. So it's staff's recommendation that we let them know that in particular, our concern is that their housing numbers are much higher than what we had projected in our general plan, and also let them know of our other findings as well, so that they can take that into account. So I guess with that, we'd be asking and recommending that we send a letter to the regional agencies, A-BAG, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, letting them know what our findings are. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Mr. Grokot?
The question I have is, you know, I believe we, our staff has a better understanding of our community than anyone else. If we were to do the numbers that they're calling for, would we have to start doing some rezoning? I mean, we've just been through most of this with general plan, and we studied things pretty well. Council gave direction on the general plan. You guys actually recommended some areas for more dense housing, and we turned it down. So I'm in agreement with what you're saying as far as sending a letter, but I guess my question just bears upon, if we were to produce the numbers that they're talking about, wouldn't we have to do some rezoning that was already rejected by the council during the general plan process?
I guess generally, I would agree with that assessment. I mean, we frankly don't know where this housing would go, and we took a very close look at, you know, on a parcel-by-parcel basis, based on the densities that were approved in our general plan. We looked at every single parcel of housing and said, this is what we think is a realistic build-out in the future. So at this point, yes, and this is maximum build-out that we're proposing in our general plan, and they're even above that. So yes, we have to relook at our general plan density figures.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, comments? I would just put, I would put a strong emphasis on this, that San Carlos has done very good work in trying to develop where our density housing would go, and there are some communities in San Mateo County that need to understand that it's time for them to share. And there are some communities in San Mateo County that need to understand that it's time for them to share. Ms. McClure, you have a comment? While she's coming up, is this just a motion, or was there... So it's just a motion to approve the letter? Okay.
I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I wondered, in the review of it, I was delighted to see that you mentioned to them that the climate action plan is better than what IBS is asking for. But I wondered if you're just going to be stating that this was the housing the general plan called for, or if there's some leeway in there? What will happen to our projected climate action plan figures if we have to do that housing? That was my question.
On the last part, what would happen to our climate action plan if we had to do more housing? I don't think it would hurt our climate action plan to do more housing. They, I think that regional agencies want us to do more housing. I mean, that's part of the big push for this. So I don't think there's an issue there. I'm sorry, I may have missed the first part of the question, Ms. McClure.
Well, I just wondered, you know, if there's more cars, more people, I'm terrified, you know, and I wonder if it would not...
Yeah, and the question is, would the requirement for more housing or their climate action figures knock our climate action figures down? And the answer is no. I mean, it's really, they're well under what the city of San Carlos is proposing for climate action goals. And so I don't think it would have any effect. But it's just a motion that we're looking for to authorize us to write that letter to the regional agencies.
Understood. Further discussion?
I'm just going to make the motion.
Make the motion, please.
Because I voted no on just about everything else, right? Figured I'd make one motion, if allowed, to write the letter as Mr. Savay asked us to do relative to the details that he outlined in his report.